Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting of the Rockport Select Board to order for Monday, April 10th. We're going to do things a little bit out of sequence this evening. We're going to take some public comment first, right now, and then go into our regular agenda because we have two gentlemen that want to present something as well as show a video clip as part of it. So, I'll turn it over to you if you'd introduce yourself and your group and let us continue, then.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your flexibility. I'm Rob Pfeifer and this is Dave Oakes and we're going to talk about plastic bags and what we think is a problem with plastic bags. And some of you may have had the misfortune of having one of your children run into me at some point in my career and you're wondering why I'm here talking about plastic bags. But my stance doesn't change from day to day. I advocate for kids and I'm afraid the world we're going to leave to the kids at this point doesn't look very good. I pulled fifty beer cans out of the side of the road yesterday in front of my house and plastic bags were festooning the trees and blowing by. It was very discouraging. So, I think we've got to do something for the children and maybe sacrifice some convenience in the process. And I, there's no argument, it's convenient to have your groceries plopped in a bag for you and you walk out. Something you should know is that the average life of a plastic bag at Hannaford is twelve minutes. Out to the car, from the car into the house, then what? And it doesn't go away. Thousand years, that plastic is still in the environment. So, there are a lot of issues right now in this. I lived through getting used to the inconvenience of putting on a seatbelt. And some of you, some people in the room probably went through that as well. And I sat on them. I avoided putting them on for years until Sarah and Kate were born and then I looked at them and said, "I've got a man up here." It's good for them, it's good for me. So, seatbelts, we have gotten used to. You know, it's just one of those things. I think we need to get used to carrying a canvas bag, carrying a reusable bag. It's not that big a deal. And we can do it down in Portland where they've banned plastic bags for I don't know how many months now. The big stores give out the cardboard boxes which they receive their goods in, have them at the checkout counter and people leave with their canvas bag and a cardboard box. And everyone goes home happy and there's no plastic blowing around the community. So, the Ocean Institute in Blue Hill did a study and they went around Penobscot Bay and found 117 particles, that's an average, 117 particles of plastic suspended in the ocean water where all our seafood is growing. One liter. One liter bottle holds 117 particles of plastic. That's pretty shocking to me and I'm reevaluating how much seafood I'm eating because of that. And if the word gets out, I think our tourism industry and our restaurants are in serious jeopardy. And that's what we do here. That's our, I think we know, that's our bread and butter. So, oysters, clams, mussels especially, and I don't know what lobsters do with plastic, but they're, they're all filtering water through their systems. Whales and seals are in big trouble, fish. So, our goal is to work in collaboration through the midcoast. Belfast, Camden, Rockport, Rockland, Thomaston, through the midcoast to have a uniform way of dealing with plastic bags, whether it's a ban or a charge or it, I can remember getting five cents off my grocery bill at Hannaford's for bringing a canvas bag. Jeff's apparently remembers that too. I, yeah, it doesn't, it wasn't that long ago, was it? Eight years, something, six, eight years? So somehow that went away. That's another way to do, create an incentive rather than a penalty. But something through, uniform through the midcoast so that individual merchants don't feel picked on and then we have less plastic. That's ultimately the goal. So I can tell you, right now there are ten communities in Maine who have already introduced something. It starts down in the south. Kennebunk and York worked together and they came up with a ban. Then Portland, South Portland worked together and they came up with a ban. And some of them were banned, some of them were charges. Then Freeport-Falmouth, then Brunswick-Topsom, and now Belfast and Saco who aren't working together but they, they just happened to have in the last week passed something. So I think you can see the coast, there is a move from south to north or east to do something about plastic with the ocean and, and our reliance upon the ocean at stake. So, I think uniformity is very important. I think convenience, we can sacrifice some of that and still have good quality of life. And I think a picture tells a thousand words, so Dave's going to show a video and then he has a few comments as well.
Okay.
Yeah, we can talk about this to the council.
So, thanks for listening.
I thought a video might show graphically what we're talking about.
All right.
Want to play that?
I remember the first time I saw a blue whale.
Look, look!
I followed them since childhood.
What do you think it's from? Is it from a ship?
I could see plastic everywhere. We were in what we thought was a relatively pristine environment. I started to wonder what was happening in oceans elsewhere on the planet. Growing up, my world was the ocean. It's where I feel the most spiritual.
As a freediver, it was the place where I proved myself to myself. Finally have the opportunity to pay the sea back.
Only a fraction of the plastic that we produce is recycled.
This is never going to degrade, it's got nowhere to go.
This was something that these animals, they were forced to endure because it was man-made and we'd put it into their environment.
The record is 276 pieces of plastic inside of one 90-day-old chick.
If the plastics are in the food chain for the dolphin, they're also in our food chain, exactly.
Communities are built on these landfill sites.
So, sweet potatoes, corn, sugarcane, all growing on 40 years of garbage.
Do you have anything not wrapped in plastic?
No.
No.
We have to make our life better for our kids' children. Change is possible. It starts with us.
So I'll follow up on Rob's point. I really appreciate you giving us a few minutes tonight and I just wanted to speak from my perspective why people in these towns are banning plastic. We're banning plastic across the United States. From San Francisco, San Francisco, all of California is banning plastics, from Portland, Oregon to the coastal towns along North Carolina have all banned plastic for these reasons. And towns, as Rob was saying, towns here in Maine are banning plastics. Why? For, for the reasons that they're bringing out in the video. And what I did is I just, you know, sat down and brainstormed a few ideas of why this is happening and why towns are behind this initiative. It's hazardous to marine life and seabirds, it's non-degradable in the environment, it pollutes oceans, rivers, and landscapes, it contributes to overburdened landfills, it's produced from non-renewable resources, it's a significant costly part of litter that we see on highways and around towns and in the wooden areas, it's consumed in extreme high volumes, it's disposable rather than reusable. But the most, I think for me, you know, all those can be kind of cerebral reasons, you know, from the head, why, why we're doing this, why we should do this. But for me, the main reason why I advocate for having a plastic ban is because I have three children and they're, someday might have children. I might be a grandparent at some point and I want my, my kids, my grandkids to be able to have a healthy environment that I've enjoyed for most of my life. And I know right now we're not on that trajectory. We're on a trajectory, as you see from that video, of what's happening to the oceans. In short, our oceans are dying. We talk a lot about climate change. Ninety percent of all the excess heat from climate change is trapped in our oceans. There's this huge heat sink. They're 35% more acidic than they were 50 years ago. Corals are dying. Ninety percent of all pelaginous fish on this planet are gone. We know this, we know the science of it, but the social science is what's going to save the oceans. And it's groups of people like you that come together that have the authority to be able to take a leadership role to do that. Sam Rayburn, anybody know that name? Famous congressman from, from Texas. Sam said once, he said, "Every once in a while, a man ought to do something because it's right." And I think there's a moral imperative here, so I really just like to leave you with that and encourage you to consider the, the ban that Belfast has already done, Camden's getting on board, Rockland, Thomaston and others. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your insights on this and the, and the short video.
But do we get to ask questions?
Normally we don't during public comment. Did you have a specific question you wanted to ask?
I do.
All right.
So you had talked about a universal midcoast kind of plan. So are you advocating that the policy that Belfast implemented and Camden is evaluating right now, those are identical policies? The question is just kind of the universal nature. You were saying that some places it's a full-on ban, some places maybe it's an additional cost, some places maybe you're, you're reducing the amount on the grocery store visit if you come with your canvas bag. So which of those options are you advocating for and can we just grab what Belfast and Camden are already working on?
I guess from my perspective, two answers. One is I'd go for the most extreme form of removing plastics. But number two, if we just shift it to paper, that's not so great either, although paper is biodegradable. This state, we don't produce brown paper bags. It's not, we're a paper-making state where we don't produce brown paper bags. And the third time you recycle the paper from a paper bag, fiber's too short to hold the bag together. Maybe the fourth, but somewhere along the line, the paper doesn't work. So shifting it to paper doesn't work really either. I'm looking at uniformity as important because I don't want, I talked to Bob Drosland at Hannaford's and he said, "It's got to be statewide or I get hit." Well, when I, I talked to Stan Ziegler and he says, "There's nothing going through the state as long as government page is in charge, he'll veto it." We have a big plastics lobby in this state, huge, a lot of money, which is sickening to me to think about lobbying for plastic in Maine. But, so Bob's comments ring in my ears, so that's when I said we have to at least address the, the competing businesses for him. And that means create a corridor so people from Belmont who are going to choose between Camden or Belfast or people from Warren who are choosing between Rockland and Camden, it's going to be the same either place. They're not going to decide based on who has bags and who doesn't. That seems to be only fair. So that's where the uniformity comes from. But I would say let's go maximum. And if it does, if for some reason, five years from now, we need to go back to it, it's always possible, but, but I think we can adjust. It's not that big a deal to carry a bag. So that's where I come from.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to leave a little petroleum in the ground. We're using a lot to make plastic bags.
Okay. While we're here at public comment, if you, well, would you come on up? That way everybody at home can hear too.
Well, I, I'm sorry, and you might have addressed this in the beginning and I missed the beginning and I apologize for that. Are we just talking about the supermarkets or are we talking about convenience stores as well? Are you talking all single-use bags or just big business?
This is getting really...
I'm sorry. And I'm just going to invite you, I'm going to invite you to our, because I believe you're coming to our committee.
Thank you. I hope so. When we went to Belfast, Belfast had drafted a voluntary ban and they were going to go to all the business, well, they were only going to go to the two big box businesses that 10,000 square feet or stores which had at least 2% of the sales were food. And there were 40 people at the meeting and everyone said, "That's too weak." I mean, I've also lived through the bottle ban, right? And nobody wanted to put a nickel on the bottle. Well, we found out that bottles were piling up everywhere. So the voluntary thing was not pleasing to the crowd assembled there. So then they strengthened the bill, but they did the ordinance, but they also were wondering about the small bags that you pick up in the produce section. You ban those too and you go to the other stores and ban those bags at Coyote Moon, et cetera, the other, the smaller stores in Belfast. They decided to make it uniform, all the stores, but leave the, if you're getting two pounds of green beans, it's pretty tough to carry them in your hand to the cash register. So there'll be small plastic bags inside the stores that'll go inside reusable bags as you leave. Does that address your question?
It does and I think we'll talk more to...
Okay. Good. I was trying to get all that you were asking about, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The next, for these guys, the next step would be, would you be interested in seeing this move forward and come to you in a more formal way? And that, you guys, if, if it's of interest to you, I'm sure the Conservation Commission will be moving it...
I was actually thinking Waste Watch.
Or Waste Watch or either...
Only because we're four towns.
Well, I think actually...
Some organization to move this forward to you.
The Conservation Commission, I think, is a good place to start because they're the committee that advises us on conservation matters in town and they're in tune with, with all those sorts of things. I think you'll find a very receptive audience there. But I think they may be able to, to work with you to come up with a, a policy that they can then suggest to us and then, and then we can move forward. So that would be my suggestion. I don't know what the rest of the board feels about that. It seemed like a good place to start.
My question would be, let's say the Conservation Commission in Rockport is really receptive, as you say, and in Camden they're not as receptive and we have lack of uniformity. Is that an issue that we need to think about?
It's definitely a possibility. You have the benefit of actually through the Conservation Commission because of Marcy, because of some of the individual people involved, I think that's still the logical place to go.
Yeah.
And whether or not it actually gets funneled through the Waste Watch, which may be more relevant because it's a multi-town effort, I, I think, I think that group can probably recommend the right path. But, you know, we can, we can do what we can do. We certainly can't do anything that, that places requirements on other towns.
No. No, I would guess I was just looking for communication amongst the town leaders.
The flip side of that is that all of our timing will be a little bit off, you know?
Sure.
So you're looking at sort of two meeting cycles before it gets back to here and they may be slower, they may be faster, but the essence of, of your question is who's going to be the leader?
Yeah.
And, and I think that on something that is not in existence and then if there's a one town that's lagging behind, the other town will exert leadership, the, the power of leadership and they may in their infinite wisdom see the, you know, the wisdom in downshifting and catching up.
Sometime in the next several months, our Select Board and the Camden Select Board will hold another one of our joint meetings and we could just put that on the agenda then. For us to adopt an ordinance, at this point because of the timing for the June ballot, it's just not going to be able to happen. To have it properly vetted and hear all the comments and get it all worded out correctly, you know, if the, and I, and I agree, the conservation, our Conservation Commission is a very strong organization. I have no idea how they deal with their counterparts either in Rockland or Camden or anywhere else around the midcoast area, but they would be the ones that would be or should be in the forefront to bring it back to us in some kind of a draft form so that then we can talk about it and then invite other comment in because an ordinance such as this would be a, well, not a lengthy, but would, would have several iterations before we would be willing to bring it to the, to the voters. And we would have to bring this sort of thing to the voters.
Good.
Yeah. Not, not guaranteeing anything would happen, but that would be the logical approach to see, you know, to get the ball rolling.
There have been two polls in the midcoast and 70% of the people responding to those polls are saying they want to see a ban, so.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think we'll, we'll gain some momentum here.
Okay. I'd like to ask the Select Board at this point, since we've already started public comment, do we want to continue and finish with the public comment at this time or go back to our regular agenda process?
Just keep going. Keep going. Roll it.
Roll it with public comment.
General public comment.
Okay. Does anyone else this evening wish to make general public comment on items not on tonight's agenda? You know, we're probably at the same point where we would be anyway when we're normally receive it. Marcy Pla, come on.
I'm just going to quickly note that I was disappointed that nobody was at the school board budget review on March 29th. Nobody from Rockport or Camden, actually, or any of the schools. I mean, select boards were present, was present for that and I was disappointed and I hope that you guys will review the school board budget on your own time. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And you all got off a easy.
Oh, and don't think that you're carrying the whole burden here. I've got someone that does the same thing to me.
All right. With that, no one else wishing to make public comment? Then we will return to our regular agenda. One thing I forgot to mention at the beginning, if you have a cell phone, please mute it and if you need to take a call, please step all the way outside. Public hearing, we have none this evening. Going into our minutes, we actually have one here. This was presented to us, I think in our last meeting for March 13th, 15th. It wasn't in our packet, but we, we, I believe we saw it, but we couldn't take action because we had three people here, but the three that were here weren't the ones, all the ones that were here for the other, so it has come back to ours. We tabled it for this evening. So this is the March 15th.
I move to accept the minutes for the March 15th Select Board meeting as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded. And I will note that both Mr. Parker and Mr. Cassas were absent that evening, so they will be abstaining from this vote. Any further discussion? Hearing all in favor of accepting abstentions? And two, so it's three, zero, and two. We did not, even though I thought we had seen it, we did not receive the minutes from the other meetings that we've had, particularly March 13th, which had been distributed to us prior electronically. Do we, have we had an opportunity to review those electronically and do we wish to take action on those this evening or table?
I've looked at them. I have a couple of corrections in the discussion portion and I don't know whether we want to do that without everybody having a copy in front of them or not.
Table it.
Let's table it then.
They were not distributed to anyone other than Bill and Ken...
Oh, just, oh.
...for review and I never received a response back from either one, so.
Okay. We'll table that.
Have your response tomorrow. I finally got to them today.
All right. Announcements of upcoming Select Board meetings. The next regular Select Board meeting will be Monday, May 8th, 7:00 PM here at the Opera House and we're also scheduled to have another one in May on May 22nd. That's also a Monday. Upcoming budget review meetings. We will be having our public hearing and taking our final votes on the disposition of the budget on Tuesday, April 18th, 7:00 PM here at the Opera House. That will also be live streamed. And if necessary, the Budget Committee will be meeting Wednesday, April 19th, 6:00 PM at the Town Office to take their final recommendation votes. The agenda that has been published shows a number of non-budget Select Board workshops that are coming up. The most important one that I'd like to mention, or the two the most that I'd like to mention is tomorrow night we will be having a Select Board Library, I think we'll call it a meeting instead of a workshop. That, we will be holding the discussion that we, with Dick Reed, the architect that has been involved with the library development to this point. I also want to point out that on May 1st, we will begin the review of the capital improvement plan. That will be at 5:30 over at the, oh, and right here at the Opera House. Some other announcements that are coming up. The Town Office will be closed Tuesday morning tomorrow from...
Eight to 8:30, is that correct?
Just eight to 8:30, yeah.
Eight to 8:30 for safety training. This is an ongoing program that the Town Manager has instituted to bring our, all of our employees up to speed on the safety issues. Also, the Town Offices, all Town Offices will be closed on Monday, April 17th in observance of Patriots' Day. Candidate nominating papers are available at the Town Clerk's office. The items, the positions that are up for election in June are two three-year terms on the Select Board and overseers of the poor. That would be myself and Mr. Parker. There are three, three-year terms on the Budget Committee currently held by Ms. Stephanie Kumble and Helen Bartlett and Mr. Tom Murphy. There is one three-year term on the Library Committee currently held by Paul Charbonneau. A one-year term also on the Library Committee, which is currently vacant, and one three-year term for Director of the MSAD 28 School Board, School Board to serve concurrently on the five-town CSD School Board currently held by Ms. Faith Batour. Did I get it right this time?
Batour.
Batour. Okay. There are a number of committee openings coming up. They are also in the agenda and on the town website. Moving forward, agenda changes. Do we have some agenda changes for this evening?
Aside from the one we just did?
Mr. Chairman, yes.
Aside the one that we just did?
I would propose that we move items B and C under unfinished business till the conclusion of the new business section. So I'll make that a motion, I guess.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Discussion?
Reasoning that there's a lot of, a lot of discussion on those items and we have other things that people from the public are here for and we'd like to have the public have their...
These are more internal.
...items taken care of first.
Little tape, thank you.
We have the motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Questions? All in favor? That has been done. We now go to the Town Manager's Report.
Town Manager's Report. First thing out of the gate here, I'd like to do something we've been doing for the past year or so, probably more than a year, is recognizing employees that have reached a significant milestone in their employment with the town. We have two employees here today that have reached five years of, of working for the town. Shay Ames and Mike Young have both worked here for the town of Rockport for five years and they add a lot to our, to their respective departments. Shay works in the Town Clerk's Tax Collector's Office and Mike is the Public Works Director. And Shay comes in every day and has a smile on her face and is, greets people with a, with a nice pleasant smile and makes people happy. Mike, we all know what Mike's does, he does everything.
Mike plows in my driveway every chance he gets.
Right. But we have a couple of gifts for them. Let's see if this is, if this is a surprise for them. If you guys want to come up.
Come on down. Yeah, come on down.
He's making everybody smile.
Yeah.
Come on, Mike.
Like me, sometimes it doesn't happen that way.
Say, I thought the rejoinder to that was Mike shows up surly every day.
You're going to come around the front.
I'll take surly.
Oh, you're going to keep switching it around on.
Surly and fastidious.
There you go. You can, yeah.
Do we have to open it now?
You do, it looks surprising.
Congratulations. Thanks, there's that smile.
Thank you.
Yeah. If you open it now, you'll never get it back. Shay, glad to have you here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll get to the more boring part of my report is a few events happening. Keep Rockport Beautiful. Just a reminder to everyone, the Keep Rockport...
Keep Rockport Beautiful. Just a reminder to everyone, the Keep Rockport Beautiful Spring Cleanup will take place on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. The number of volunteers has grown. We were over a hundred, I think, last year. Hopefully, we'll be more than that this year. So if anybody's interested in volunteering, they should contact Maggie. If you go to my report on the webpage, you can get the links for that. They've, last year, they picked up more than a ton of litter and trash on the sides of the roads. And many of that is, as they, is the two gentlemen were just in here. Plastic bags are a big portion of what we end up picking up. They get tangled up in the trees. They're up in, they're everywhere. And this year, through the efforts of the Waste Watchers and the group involved, Camden has decided to join in our effort. And so Camden will be doing their cleanup on the week before ours. We're working with Camden and sharing like, things like signs in our pickers and our vests so that we don't have to double-buy all of that stuff. So I think it's a really good effort, particularly now with all the snow gone. You start to see all the trash on the side of the roads. They'll be picking up a lot of trash this, this next, in the next couple of weeks. So if, if anybody wants to volunteer, please contact us up, contact us. You can go to the website or the Keep Rockport Beautiful Facebook page. The High Sidewalk Project is finally gonna get started. It's due to start on April seventeenth, and Farley and Sons will be starting the work. I don't know if you noticed today, they've got it all marked out on the, on the pavement. That will mean that the sidewalk will be closed. And everybody, it's, this is a really busy time of the year. As I drove home today up Russell Ave, the walkers in town and in the village and up on Russell and onto Chestnut Street, there were more, I must have passed fifteen people walking, and I didn't have a single car. I didn't meet a single car that whole time. So people are out walking, and the sidewalk does get a lot of use. So our goal is to get it finished by Memorial Day, correct, Mike? Yeah, that's, the goal is to have it completed by Memorial Day. It will be a problem because people will not be able to use that sidewalk. So they're gonna have to walk out into the street, which is gonna be a bit of a challenge.
Well, they can also walk down through.
Do the park.
The park, at least the upper level of, I think it's actually called Conan and Park.
Yep.
But up there by the chessboard and then come up the back way.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Or vice versa.
It's gonna be inconvenient. We gonna get some signs up there, Mike? Just, just letting people know ahead of time, because a lot of the people are the same walkers every day. And just letting them know that it's, it's, it's coming, it's the cost of improvement. You know, it's, we're gonna end up with a sidewalk that's, a walkway that's, how is it? How wide is it, Mike? Five feet wide. It will look, it will look dramatically different there. And hopefully, people will be happy with it. It'll be a much safer sidewalk. We'll have a better rail on it, a better fence.
Railings that aren't about to fall over.
Yeah. It will, it will look dramatically different. The Commercial Street Sewer Extension, that started over the weekend. It did, the, the project on, they started Saturday night. It took a lot, a lot longer than they thought. But they did manage to get the manhole in. They finished about two in the afternoon?
Yes.
Yeah. They worked straight through the night, from six at night to two in the afternoon to get that manhole in the, in the ground. So that's, that was the hardest part of the job. Now they're starting to work tonight. They're working tonight and tomorrow night at night, going up the hill past the Blue House. And once they get up past the Blue House, then there's enough road for them to be able to work during the daytime and, and still have traffic, traffic flow properly. The Rockport Opera House, one twenty-fifth, as we, we all love a party here. There's a group working on a special event to celebrate Rockport's one twenty-fifth anniversary for Saturday, August twelfth, will be the official day. Anyone interested in volunteering for that event? Should email Terry at the Opera House Manager at the Opera House at town, you know, the town, email address, town.rockport.me.us. Again, that link is on my, my manager's report. So if you go to that on the website. The hiring process for the Police Department is proceeding along. We have one internal candidate being considered at this point. We hope to have an announcement on that in the coming weeks. Sadly, we had to accept the resignation of Dana Smith, who has worked for the department since two thousand and eight. Dana cited personal reasons, and he's going to, to work in the private sector. We'll miss, miss him. He was a, he was a really good police officer. And we'll miss him at the department and wish him best, our best in his new endeavors. The new cruiser should be here in the next couple of weeks, in the coming weeks. Public Works, surprisingly.
Question?
Yep.
Can we, can we do something just a little bit more than wishing him our best? We're gonna like, get him something, right?
Sure.
A decent amount of time to be working for the town.
Mm-hmm. Do that.
He did a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Took all the surprise out of it now.
He's a cop. He knows exactly what we're saying right now.
Yeah, they know everything. They know everything.
Everything.
Just taking myself a note here. Public Works, surprisingly, there were, you know, spring is here, Mr. Weatherman, but we still had.
Spring and rain.
Yeah, we still had a few winter storm events in the past month. The department's been working on truck repairs and roadside cleanup, done a lot of that. Additionally, Steve and Mike have been doing the, the road review to determine which roads we're gonna need to do work on this, during this paving season. So they're, they've been working on that. The department has also been working, they've spent a lot of time getting the department into shape, to be shape compliant, which is what we've been doing with police and fire and the town office. They had their preliminary walkthrough inspection last week, correct? Mike, on Friday? I think it was on Friday. So they've, you know, they've worked really hard to get there. The guys have, did a lot of work. They've completed all their mandatory training. And so they're, we should be able to get them shape, shape compliant here in the next month. I think it's, isn't it a month after they do preliminary?
Well, you need to receive the report first.
In that, oh, okay. And then it's a month after.
We have an idea, but we.
Yeah. So the preliminary inspection just comes in and they look around and they tell you, here's the things that we see. And if you fix these things, get, when you get these things all fixed, let us know. And thirty days later, they come in and they do the final inspection, and hopefully, you pass that final inspection. The Truck Committee has been working, for the Fire Department, has been working on the bid specs for the new truck. They meet, you know, those, those fire guys, if they're not training, not doing fires and not working on the Truck Committee, they're, I don't know what they do with that.
I didn't even know we had a Truck Committee.
Yeah, yep. They're really, they're an active, really active group. Jason keeps them busy, and if, they, they just are always doing something, that fire, the fire guys. They're an amazing bunch of guys. The Safety Committee.
Before you go on, now, will they be bringing anything to us to endorse before it is sent out to bid? Or how will that work?
It typically just goes out to bid unless you want it to come in.
I'm just wondering, you know, what their plan is.
Typically, it goes out to bid for a truck that will come in at the, within the budget that we have.
We set the budget.
Yeah.
I know, yeah.
It'll be red.
We'll paint it red.
I did have a select board member once stood up at a meeting and said, I don't care what it costs or anything, as long as it's red. We can't have one of those yellow fire trucks or green fire trucks.
I was thinking of a white one.
Yeah.
It was in the snow.
One of the things that we've been working really hard, is part of the, the shape compliance, is the Safety Committee has been meeting regularly and doing training, as you see, getting records up to date. And we've gotten all our mandatory training done. And now we're starting to work on some of the other training. Tomorrow, we, we have our emergency evacuation training, which is the eight to eight-thirty training. And then from, we have two sessions of training where we're doing CPR and, CPR and first aid, basic first aid to make everybody qualified to use the AEDs. So we've separated that into two groups so that everybody's not in the same group, so we don't have to close the office. The, the trainers.
That's this Wednesday, right?
That's tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow. That training is tomorrow. We've just got a, we are also completing our last couple of things for our NIMS compliance. And one of them is that document that's on your, that I gave you, which is a document you've seen before. It's what we'll be adopting as part of an ordinance. It's on the, on the warrant for this year. It's what you approved last year when you, or year and a half ago, when you, you created a, not an ordinance.
You approved it as a policy.
Policy.
That's right.
But in order to be NIMS compliant, it has to be an ordinance that's adopted by the voters. So that will be one more thing that we will be able to get done.
Do you need us to bring these back on the eighteenth?
No, you have the, you have the wording, I believe you have the wording for the ordinance on the, on the warrant.
Yeah, I just don't want us to have, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Create another copy.
Yeah, you, it wouldn't hurt to bring it back.
Okay.
The work that we've been doing with the Safety Committee stuff has several purposes. One is it reduces our mod rate, which helps save us money. But ultimately, it's not about the money. It's about making sure that both our employees are safe and residents are safe. And if it saves us money, that, that's an added bonus. But having our employees be able to work safely and having our, having residents, us have a, have a good plan for residents in case of an emergency, that's, that's the main goal. You know, being able to get grants and also save money is an added bonus. But it does, it does take time. And, you know, I gotta give the staff that are working on this, you know, Abby and Diane and Mike and everybody that's working, Megan that are working so hard to get all of these documents in place, because they are, they are very difficult, because many of them have similar names. Because NIMS and employee safety stuff, they have, you know, similar titles. And it makes it confusing. But the important thing is that there's two fact, there's two parts to it. One is employee safety, and the other is, NIMS is for resident safety. So they've been working on that. Megan has been working on changes to the budget and also working on the wastewater budget. Any idea, any word on the audit? Megan? By the, it's supposed to be here by the end of this week. I, I attended the Northeast Regional ICMA Conference last week, last Thursday and Friday, and represented Maine in selecting the next New England Regional Vice President for ICMA. And also, as a member of the MMA Executive Board, I'll be attending the National League of Cities Conference on May seventeenth and eighteenth. And they have special workshops there that MMA pays for, for new, new members of the Executive Board and trust members. So, and lastly, something that's not on the, on your, in your manager's report is we're putting together a solar open house to, to promote the solar, the work we did with the solar panels. And that is May fourth from four to six P M. So hopefully, people will come over, come, come to the town office, ask questions. Representatives will be there to explain how it all works, get a tour, see how all that stuff is functioning.
May fourth?
May fourth.
Okay.
Thursday, May fourth.
Okay.
From four to six. So, and that's my manager's report.
Do we have any questions of the manager?
Just additional comment on Dana Smith at the Police Department. Again, he didn't get noticed a lot, and that meant he was doing a good job as a police officer, which I really appreciate. If there is any send-off or something like that, if the Police Department would allow, allow a select board member to attend, I would, I would like to know about that.
All right.
But I don't wanna, if they don't, then that's fine, too. I don't want to step on there.
Will do.
But I think it's important for them to know that we support them.
Yep.
Anything else?
I'll take care of that.
Then we'll move to unfinished business. This is the consideration of cost allocation to perform the remediation work on Mount Pleasant Street. We have, and Mike is here with, Mike, why don't you come on up to the podium? Because you're gonna be talking about it. So if I understand this correctly, the estimated cost is two hundred and forty-three thousand. We anticipate we still have sixty-five thousand plus in this year's.
Where are we now? You've jumped to where? Oh, Mount Pleasant, okay.
Mount Pleasant Street.
You lost me, yeah.
First thing under unfinished business.
Yep.
Okay. This is the problem between electronic and people that are still stuck in the paper. Even though I was the one that advocating electronic, I'm still stuck in the paperwork, paper world, so. So where, what's the plan here? Can you give us a?
I think we're still working on a plan.
Yeah.
Rick had asked me to come up with an idea of the streets are really bad. Discuss, you know, what they are. One of them, we've got Rockport Woods. We've got Vinyl Street that is really breaking up bad. Ministerial Drive, which is probably a short section, pretty minor. Old Rockland Road is really bad. Brandy Brook is getting bad.
Old, Old Rockland Road, that's the one that's down through Rockville?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
The siding, so to speak.
Yeah.
Brandy Brook off Park Street, which is a short, short run. And Mill Street, the whole street is bumpy and fairly rough, but there's a section that, of about thirty-one hundred feet that I need to do some. I can let the other go by for a while longer, but there's a section I need to get something done with. I can give you a number of those streets individually, or a rough estimate of what they all total. Those streets that we've talked about, as long as I don't have to do a lot of rebuild, and I may have to do some on the lower part of Vinyl Street, which means reclaiming that, reshaping it, getting a grinder in. If, if, I haven't figured that part in yet. But just for pavement, we're looking at two hundred and eighty-two thousand to do those streets.
That's just the streets you mentioned.
Just the ones I've mentioned, not, not.
Not pleasant at all.
Not, right. Nothing that isn't, you know, these ones are just getting bad to the point of losing them.
Because I know right now that in the current road construction budget, we have a two hundred thousand line item in there right now. So that won't cover this stuff.
Right.
And that's not even starting to talk about Mount Pleasant Street yet.
And there's one more that hasn't made the list yet, just because we hadn't made it there. And the, the commercial park beside Public Works also needs to be done. That's breaking up pretty bad.
So the bottom line is, there's, there's enough roadwork that we've got, that's targeted for this year for the money, the two hundred thousand that you have allocated in the budget. So it's, the difference is, we're, we're, we're really looking at, we're about a hundred and four thousand dollars short of what it's gonna take us to get to where we need to be on Mount Pleasant Street and how to handle that hundred and four thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Hundred and fifty-four, but we have fifty thousand for the engineering.
And that's, that's just to get it in dirt, correct, Rick, is what you're saying? That's to get it.
To fix those nine areas.
Right.
That Will Gartley identified for us the last time.
Yes.
I'm looking at the memo here and showing an anticipated balance in this year's road construction line of sixty-five thousand. And I, I think Rick is suggesting that that can all be applied to Mount Pleasant. Are there things that have to be done?
I think we took out eighty-five hundred for some of the things that, you know, I know that I need to do. That, that may not cover everything, but the ones that I know, the things that I know, I've figured in.
So from a math perspective, there's seventy-three thousand available, of which, well.
We've already taken eight.
You've taken it out, so that's what's left.
Right, that's what will be left.
So you're protecting, from an engineering standpoint, you're protecting the roads that also need to be done.
The touch-up. Yep.
Megan knows this inside and out, so.
The number for the bond is actually reduced by another thirty-three hundred, because we had to pay today for some of the engineering cars, costs that Gartley endorsed. we had to pay today for some of the engineering cars, costs that Gartley and Dorsky has already performed. So, the total balance due needs to be increased by thirty-three hundred dollars.
Okay. So, really, there's only twenty thousand and change left.
Right.
Okay.
So, the question is really how to, you know, how to make this happen? How do you want, how do you wanna approach making this happen? We're a hundred and, a hundred and seven thousand dollars short, right, then, now?
Well, and more than that, if Mike is telling us we need eighty thousand dollars more in the, as in the paving budget than we have.
Eighteen thousand more there.
Brendan? The last time I heard on this topic, there were a group of engineers up there having inspected and unable to come to any conclusion as to what had happened or why. Are we in a different place now?
The, the grade under the road, the dirt in the road, basically, has just deteriorated, degraded from years of putting basic dead sand into it, and it just gets mixed in, you know, and every storm that it gets icy, we break it down even more. But with, with what they've come up with, between filter fabric and, I think, a two-foot rock base, I think everybody's pretty confident that there's pieces that are going bad, this will support that, and you won't have the problems we're having now. You know, we may remove some of that material that's in there, hoping that, you know, the top foot may come out.
But your assessment is that there's no reason to be concerned that this money that goes in now is effectively gonna be...
Washed away.
Washed away.
Right, no.
But it's predicated on the idea that we come back and pave it within the next year or two.
I understand. So, to that extent, there's a risk that if you don't get back in a timely fashion, then...
Eventually, it will deteriorate.
Brendan, in the last meeting, there was a good explanation of the way that the fines will go down and undo what you've done in terms of the packing, because they act as a lubricant, as you know, being round. So, that was, the caveat was, we can pull all that stuff out, put the good stuff back in, but you don't wanna go more than one season, two seasons of sanding, because it's, you'll get, you'll be in the same position again.
Okay. Before we have any motions, does anyone wish to make public comment on this agenda item? All right.
So, I have a, could you navigate us back to their...
Their summary letter?
Yeah, I'd just like somebody to walk me through, there's an assessment there, due to the cost of the project, I would also recommend that this line item be its own warrant article. What's the, what's the analysis here? Why?
So, they don't shoot down the whole budget?
Well, I mean, and I don't necessarily agree with that.
The exact opposite rationale.
Well, yeah. I mean, I, for me, I, I don't think we wanna get into putting individual streets on as individual warrant articles. For me, that, that's just an opportunity for somebody to shoot down everyone, because , oh, it's not my street, I don't want it.
Exactly right.
I would rather see us, you know, we got a problem, we're gonna fix it through the Public Works Department, let's fund the Public Works budget appropriately to do that. And, and if we have to explain that at town meeting, and, and so the voters can understand it, we'll have to do that. And if the voters say, we can't afford, we don't wanna spend that much money on Public Works, then it's up to this board, with the consultation of the manager and, and Mike, to determine, okay, what are we gonna do with the funding that the town provides for roads? Which ones are gonna rise to the level? So, I, personally, I, I don't like the idea of a, of a standalone article for, for Mount Pleasant Street.
Except that the Mount Pleasant Streets, the subject came up and the condition came up, sort of out of turn, in, in the way that, you know, Steve and Mike have been for years and years planning on these roads. And, and quite frankly, the, you know, there were some people on Mount Pleasant that, that, if my understanding is correct, didn't want it to be paved. And now, all of a sudden, the situation has changed dramatically. So, because of the dramatic change, and the fact that it's, what, you know, that one project is as much as the rest of everything combined, I don't think it's disingenuous to put it as a, as a separate article and, you know, try it on its own, on its own merits. It is, it is, I mean, we talked last time about bonding it. And that's also one way of, from a subject matter perspective, of bringing it up that way.
But we wanted to look at this, just as the remediation, with the idea that maybe, you know, next year, we bond the actual paving because of the length.
Right, so, we need this prior to it anyway.
So, talk me through why that, why you don't do that all at once?
Do all the repair all at once?
If we're gonna do this, let's do this.
Well, because bonding, I mean, for bonding, you need to know how much it's cost, and for cost, you need to have, you need to have the engineering.
We have just said that there is a risk of doing this repair, not getting the job done, and the effects of this repair being washed out if we don't pave the road.
If we wait a number of years.
So, why isn't, why, if this is an important thing and a valuable thing to be done, do the whole job.
I mean, I, I asked, that's the, that's the question I asked Will when he was here last week, are we, if we do this piecemeal, are we gonna be in trouble if we don't get it done in the second year? And, and Will said, no, he said, he thought, he told us, and somebody can correct me if, if I'm hearing wrong, but he told us that he thought that if we did the work that he's suggesting, just the remediation work, that it would be fine to last, to, to put off the pavement for another season.
Actually, he came in with an idea that we could do it over, over a three-year period to pave it.
And I think the board wanted, wanted to do it in two years, if I remember the board's sentiment.
I'm, I'm gonna interrupt. Molly?
Yes. I just wanted to say that thanks to the weather and everything, there were times about a month ago when I couldn't get out of the house, couldn't go down the road, and so couldn't, neither the neighbors. And thanks to the work that you all did in building up the gravel and stuff and checking on it, it now is passable and the rain has not hurt it. And I was originally against it, because I liked living on a rural road, but that ain't so anymore. It's, there are too many people living there who need the road, and you need to be able to have ambulances, and the school bus goes down it when it can. And so, I think that it is a very important thing to pave it, you can fix it and pave it in sections if you want to, because some sections have more population than other sections, but so, those other places, no. But thanks for all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Come on.
Just to remind the board, I know when we were here before, we, we all, the residents of Mount Pleasant Street left feeling that the school board, the, that the select board was gonna take action this year and at least put, I think it was two hundred, two hundred and seventy thousand, I've got it here, into the road to make, and, and what Will Gartley pretty much said was that the work that they do for two hundred and, two hundred and seven this summer, that would make it, he said that the road will not deteriorate next year, he said. But he also said, you know, every year you wait, as you put sand on, it's gonna cost more to the town eventually to pave it. So, if they can do the work this summer, then next year, get part of it paved or some of it paved, that'll be good. But every year, it's gonna take more money to, to pave it again.
Yeah. So, my concern is, is less about when the work gets done, and more about going back to the voters twice. If we know this is coming, that, why do we wanna ask them twice?
Megan...
I think, quite honestly, it's the amount.
And the bonding, the timing for bonding, the timing for bonding won't allow us to get it to the voters, it wouldn't allow us to get it to the voters.
It wouldn't allow us to do anything this summer.
This summer, correct?
We can do it out of our budget, the, the initial work, but to do a bond, we have to go through all kinds of steps to get there, and that would require at least until November.
And if I remember correctly, the, the hope was that the bond would be approved, so spring of twenty eighteen, we start laying the asphalt down, because all the groundwork was done, summer, spring, summer of twenty seventeen, out of our budget, we use the fall to bond out. But I'm almost wondering if, as much as it kinda sucks, bump that bond up a little bit, especially considering we've got close to three hundred thousand, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how you, you get the roads paid for without nailing it all to two budgets, 'cause it...
Could you clarify, when you bump up, you mean move it earlier? Or by bump up, you mean put more money into...
Well, I guess I just wasn't anticipating, knowing that we had another three hundred thousand dollars worth of roadwork that pretty much needed to get done.
This two hundred and eighty-two, we've already budgeted two hundred for.
Okay, that makes me feel a bit better.
Okay, it, you know, Mike has now identified effectively eighty-two thousand more. I think his original request was two eighty-eight, or somewhere in that area, which would have covered all of this.
I'm tracking better, thank you, because that's a lot less head scratching than two hundred and eighty.
Yeah, we went through the process to make the LD one, we, Rick brought it way down, but then we pushed it back up, effectively splitting the difference. And now, we're getting indication that we really should be looking at even more.
And, and that's why I brought up the, the sudden and surprise nature of it, because it, because simultaneously was everything that was in the plan. And, and that's as good a reason as, and, and that's why, as a board, we informally, we didn't, I don't think we took a vote on it, but we informally said, we should take this to bond. It, you know, it's a big project, it's sudden, it's, it, it can't be sort of evened out over the course of ten years, and therefore, the appropriate thing at that point is to, is to take it to bond. But there's only so fast that we can, A, get the bond written, and B, have, have good accurate numbers for the bond.
I think the board also agreed that we've got to do something this summer, and that, that can't be with a bond.
Yeah, yeah.
You've gotta put money in the budget this summer.
And it's not unusual, I mean, typically, Mike's numbers, the, the roads that we have to pave in our annual maintenance kind of paving stuff usually exceeds what we have for actual money. So, we're usually a little bit behind what, you know, what Mike would, if Mike had unlimited funds, he would pave a lot more. So, it's not unusual that we have more roads that need to be paved than we actually have money for. And, you know, the, the paving is, as I remember, Mike, it was about five hundred thousand dollars was just the actual paving. So, the discussion was, you know, that that would be a bond, that that would be bonded, and this would be just part of the, the budget process. That was the discussion, whether, whether it was gonna be in November of, of two thousand seventeen or June of two thousand eighteen, that was still kind of up in the air about when the bond, when you'd be looking for a bond, but you hadn't really decided that.
Yeah.
How long is, once that road is paved, Mike, how long is it gonna last?
Even with putting this money into it, I mean, hopes would be ten to twelve years is what you'd like to get out of a road. That road is gonna move, with the ledge is gonna move more so, so you're looking at probably...
And the, the, one of the reasons I asked the question is that, you know, there may be other roads in town that are, that are in need, and, because we're generally, I get the sense that we're a little bit behind in our paving.
Yeah.
If we can think about it in terms of that, and, and in terms of creating a bond, that's, that's a catch-up paving type bond, which would be not just Mount Pleasant Street, but perhaps some of the other streets. And so, for the paving season of twenty eighteen, maybe that's what we do, and, and have a bond in November that's not just Mount Pleasant Street, but includes some of the other roads in town, that really gets us to a place where we can then, you can then come in with a fairly good annual number for the annual budget, that's a little bit more palatable for the next ten years or so while we pay, while we pay off the bond. And, and, you know, I think, when you're talking about a bond, that's, the other reason I ask is, I don't think you wanna be looking at a twenty-year bond where you're still paying off the bond and having to repave the road that you're paying off. The length of the bond needs to be appropriate to how long the asset is gonna last.
Right.
So...
Some of it also deals with just what the underlayman is up there, because we've got some roads that barely make it to ten years, up in your neighborhood, for instance. They like to slide down that clay.
If we were gonna follow that model, why would it be wiser to do that through a catch-up bond, as you described, as opposed to the capital improvement plan?
I think it would be wise to do it through the capital improvement plan, but the capital improvement plan at some point may, may involve, you know, bonding.
It's not, it, yeah, no, it would...
To my opinion, your road maintenance really should be part of our annual budget. Capital improvement, such as what we're talking about here for Mount Pleasant on paving, was now a dirt road, even if we bring it up to, you know, remediation level, that that is a capital improvement, that is bondable. But, you know, going out and redoing, you know, you know, what did you say, Rockport Woods, Vinyl Street, Mill Street, some of those, that's ongoing maintenance, and that should be in our annual budget. One thing that is worrying me here is, we still haven't gotten the auditor's report back, which tells us how much we had left over from a year ago in our, you know, now, what is it called? Undes, no, it's not... Unassigned fund balance. You know, did we carry a lot over that we could use to then offset some of this additional cost? And without that knowledge, it's hard to, to say, you know, are we really going out and looking that we're gonna have to bump up the mill rate? Or, or are we now well over our UFB level, the, the minimum that's required by the town charter, that we could take that money out from there? But until we get that number, it's hard to say.
Well, I think focusing on, on the task at hand, which is, one of the questions is, do we roll in, do we have a separate line item at the town warrant for Mount Pleasant Street? I think that, I think that the town is very friendly to, to that neck of Rockport, and I, and I don't see it as setting it up for failure and all of a sudden having somebody, you know, the vote go eh against it. But it does break it apart for discussion purposes, because generally, a big jump, you'll have someone who follows it, you know, Dr. Arman Trout's a good one for that, and, and he'll say, tell me why it's, you know, this is a huge jump from, from what it thought. And then, you say, because, because, because. Whereas, if you just introduce a whole new thing, I think it, I don't think it necessarily weakens it, and it may, it may make it stronger for purposes of, of town meeting. But it also is very, very clear, it's saying, this is something that came up two months ago, and, and this is how we reacted to it, this is the plan on getting it done as fast as possible. When we get to the point of talking about bonding a whole bunch of roads at the same time, it's an interesting idea, but it, it sort of messes up the whole schedule, you know, then, twelve years from now, in terms of that bond, there'll be a whole bunch of roads that'll be in the same situation. So, I, I think, I think we have to be really careful, and it's, you know, in all the, the three terms I've been on this, on this board, it's, Mike's budget is the easy one to get, you know, an extra hundred or two hundred thousand dollars out of. And, and we just have to be cognizant year after year about the cost of, of pulling money out of that budget.
Just, quickly, I mean, I think there's a lot of worth in what you're saying, Jeff, but I also, I'm not, I'm not at all opposed to what Ken was proposing, just within reason. I mean, if you're talking about trying to do every one of those roads on a piggyback bond on top of Mount Pleasant, then yes, that would be, that would be a very high thing, you're hitting all those roads, and then you do, you'll, you'll catch them all around the same time. But trying to do a little bit of that catch-up, so now, we've got a pretty easing, even paving budget going forward and can get on a more comfortable schedule, I'd just be happy with exploring it, to find out what, what we would be looking at to put a couple of those roads into that kind of paving bond.
And we don't need to decide that tonight, that's something we can discuss in the coming months. What we need to decide tonight is a couple of things. Number one, are we gonna do a separate article for Mount Pleasant Street on the warrant? And number two, bottom line, what are we gonna put in that paving budget? We've already had our budget meetings, the budget committee's reviewed things, but it's seen, it seems evident that we either have to, to take the two hundred and four thousand, or well, it's a hundred and seven thousand now, and give it its own line, or add that at least to the, to the paving budget that we have in, in the budget.
You know, we had, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I would like to see any money that you put into the budget for Mount Pleasant be put in with the money, the fifty thousand that's already there in that line. So, if you're allocating money for Mount Pleasant specifically, it should be put in that Mount Pleasant line in the budget.
Where the engineering is already?
So, add that, so increase it by like a hundred and seven thousand plus change?
Right.
Okay. That makes, makes sense. You know, one thing I wanted, I, you know, wanna know, because Mike brought up the roads that he needs to touch this summer. We've been trying to keep out of that, you know, this specific road is being done, but rather giving him a budget to work within. He's come back to us and said that, you know, we've got some special circumstances here you might wanna increase based on... He's come back to us and said that, you know, we've got some special circumstances here you might want to increase based on this. It's our choice.
Well, hang on, even if that's the case, why is it not a valid mechanism to put the money in his budget and have him make that decision, as opposed to us saying, this money goes to this road?
Well, I think we're talking about putting.
There's a precedent here that I think is troubling, which is that we deliberately or unintentionally ignore something that needs to be dealt with long enough, that it becomes a big enough problem that it jumps to the front of the priority line. Why would we do that?
You're right, and what I'm thinking here, what we want to do is, we're looking right now at an $82,000 shortfall. We.
For regular roads.
For regular roads. But we also have another 107,000 for a special project that is outside of that normal road maintenance. Yes, we could add the two together and come up with, and just put another 250,000 in, or we could put it in as two lines, two items, add 82,000 to the regular road construction budget, and put another 107,000 into the Mount Pleasant, what we've called engineering, but rename it the construction.
It just says Mount Pleasant.
Okay, Mount Pleasant.
But I think what Brendan's asking is a different question.
Yeah.
So, going back to history, that's not a road where we said, la, 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 I can't hear you. It's a road.
No, no, I understand, people actually didn't want it paved, right?
And yet, what we're describing here still looks an awful lot like funding the ball fields the way we did before. Ignore it, emergency payment. It's a way around the voters, or it makes us look like we were.
How is it a way around the voters, though?
Yeah.
Well, people don't pay attention in the same way in the middle of the year to the way that we're funding things as they do, you know, the one time of the year that they're really looking at what we're doing.
Like town meeting?
So, like, we're holding a big red flag up in the town.
Yeah, there's a description over here as though I think we're trying to sort of like make it easier on ourselves at town meeting. I want to make it harder on ourselves. I want to have to stand up there and explain to everybody how and why this happened, and what we think is the responsible thing to do about it.
And either is one lump sum or is two articles. It's the same thing. We have to justify to the voters who show up at town meeting upstairs as to why we want to spend this money and why we want them to approve us spending that money.
And in my opinion, sectioning it out to it be its own standalone line does make it tougher on us, because that totally highlights it. That says to everyone, we're not sneaking anything by you, trying to hide it in Mike's budget. We pulled it out to let you know, here's a big ticket number, and here's the reason why.
Last year, we did it, we did it on two articles upstairs. One was on fiber, which got shot down, and the other was on solid waste. And the contract on that, they were both discussed, they were both argued at length. And that's the way town meeting's supposed to work.
Well, I think what Megan is suggesting, which is whatever number we come up with, put it in. There is a Mount Pleasant Street line in the Public Works budget right now, separate from the road construction line. And I think if we put the Mount Pleasant, whatever we allocate in that line, that that's a reasonable compromise, I think, between just lumping it in with road construction and having it have its own separate article. It's in Mike's budget that way. And the reality is, I mean, we put all these lines in Mike's budget, and then the voters approve the bottom line of that budget. And then Mike has the flexibility to move things around a little bit as he sees fit. If Mount Pleasant Street comes in at, you know, far less than we estimate, then he's got some money that he can put into other roads. And so, I think that that, I would be comfortable with doing it that way. I still don't like the idea of a separate article.
I agree.
Especially considering that it's its own Mount Pleasant line, I'd be.
And it does, I think it solves your issue, which is it's easy to explain to the voters, you know, we don't all of a sudden have a huge jump in the road construction line, but we do have that other separate line, and that's easy. I mean, this process has been going on for a couple of months now, so I think we can all, are fairly well-versed in being able to explain that at town meeting.
To move this along a little bit, because we have other items that we need to deal with tonight. We don't need to take action tonight, but on the 18th, we will. And on the 18th, we need to come in prepared to say, what's in the budget right now is set, or we're increasing this line by this much, and this line by that much, or we're increasing this line by this much, and we're adding this new warrant article, which I would ask Rick to, you know, at least have it prepared in draft form.
A draft warrant article?
Just, you know, in case we want to inter, you know, inject that as a separate warrant article right after Public Works budget, you know, so.
Do I understand correctly that the Budget Committee is poised to have a meeting after hours in case that we go up?
They have been, they are aware that if needed, they should meet on the 19th.
And then they can make a modified recommendation.
They can make their recommendation, well, and if we add a new warrant article, they will have to come in and make a recommendation on that.
But they're going to have to come in anyway, because we're, I mean, we're not going to get away without, we're going to have to change this Public Works budget. I don't think there's any two ways about that. And I guess my final question is, right now, Mike, in the Public Works budget, the number that we've published is 200,000 for road construction. And you told us you really need 280 and some change at this point.
Right.
So, if we, we decide not to put the 280 in there, then I assume from what you told us that you're going to have some roads that are going to fail.
Yes, there's some, you know, shorter roads that I would pick to weed out if I absolutely had to, but they should be taken care of this year.
And he has to do that every year, I mean, every year, there's, there's.
Yeah, I know, but if it's, I mean, I look back at, you know, his original department head recommendation, which was 288, and I guess what he's telling us is that that recommendation was pretty darn good. And, you know, Rick cut it to meet LD1, and we said, let's split the difference when we went through it, and, you know, maybe we have to reassess that. So, we may be adding back, I mean, right now, I'd be inclined to put Mike's 282 in there for that budget and add the 107,000 to the Mount Pleasant line, and there we go. We're going to be adding, you know, nearly $200,000 to the Public Works budget.
Yeah.
But it is what it is.
We can get into that in a couple of days.
18th. Yep. Everybody's planning on being here on the 18th, correct?
Planning on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have.
Thanks, Mike and Megan, that was helpful.
And thank you for all of you who have listened through this. We now move on, because we have agenda change, two items to put them later. We now go into new business. The first item that we have is acknowledgement of a gift to the town, a payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of $700 from the Coastal Mountain Lands Trust. And, okay, we're scrolling down to that.
Don't pay no attention.
Okay, but no, seriously, Coastal Mountain Land Trust has made a generous donation, the amount of $700, to the town in lieu of their taxes. And, you know, it's very nice to have charitable organizations that normally wouldn't pay taxes, but do. And we have quite a few in town that do this, so I think we should acknowledge them and thank them for the generosity.
Well, and the sentence in the letter that's important to me is that they recognize the benefit that they get from town services, and they're willing to contribute. That means a lot to me.
Do we have a motion to acknowledge them? You can just make one up.
Well, I move to accept the payment in lieu of taxes offered by the Coastal Mountain Land Trust with our profound thanks and to send a letter of appreciation.
Second.
Moving second, further discussion?
And talk to all your nonprofit friends.
Hey, I'm sure they do. All in favor of the motion? That's very good. We have a committee application this evening, and she's been patiently waiting. It is for Marcy Anis Casas to join the Conservation Commission. Marcy, would you step on up to the podium?
Thank you for having me.
Yeah. Now, you would be joining as a regular member of the commission, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. I will remind everybody out there that our committees, except for the Budget and Library, which are elected, all have ability to have up to three alternate members who would fill in when a regular member is absent. Be very encouraged that they would attend all of the meetings and act as if they were, just without voting representation, so.
Marcy has been attending our meetings already very diligently and is contributing. I think she'd be a great addition.
And we have a nice letter from the chair, which sings your praises.
I'm gushing there.
And I would just ask, at this point, the term that's available expires in about three months in June. Would you be looking to then look for another three-year appointment after that?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
Are we allowed to do a three-year and three-month?
I, you know, I would say that, you know, we've got a lot of foot in hand, come on.
That's okay, I'll come back out.
Oh, no, there's a process.
Well, it's just an automatic reappointment if you tell Stacy there, I'm willing to stay.
Our re-up policy is, are you breathing?
Yeah, not always.
Maybe that you can waive the having her come in again, where you just spoke to her three months earlier.
Right, and we got a babysitter.
Actually, I was hoping that you couldn't find a babysitter so that you could come, and we could send Owen to the back of the room with the kids.
Yes, that would have been fun.
Well, I move to approve the appointment of Marcy Anis Casas to the Conservation Commission with a term expiration of June 30th, 2017.
Moving second. Just for discussion purposes, there's no money involved here. There's no money, so I believe I can vote on approving my wife.
Well, I don't know, could we, you know, do you think it's, you know?
It would be a safe bet if you recused yourself.
Then I don't have to vote against it.
I just need a simple majority, right?
Yes, yes. Okay. I have no objection to Owen casting a vote here.
No money.
I know. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Good night, I'll go to the other side.
And looking forward to having a lot of good work done.
Yes.
We're looking for that conservation, you've already heard that you've got a new task coming up.
I am so excited. I did notice, though, I'm going to quickly say, I did notice that the Conservation Commission is on the agenda tonight to give a presentation. I don't think that we were aware of that, so if we could bump that to a later meeting.
I guess we'll hold that on May 8th.
That may well be my fault, I have been away, and I apologize.
Well, and we weren't positive that we were meeting tonight because of the last, the data log at the last. Okay, so I will let them know, report that back to them on Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we're going to go to our presentation by the Parks Commission. Committee.
Parks Committee.
And we have David, David, I apologize for giving you the wrong time to show up. I didn't realize it was going to take this long.
No.
It was entertaining.
You have a low threshold of.
And you can relax, I'm not going to request any large ticket contributions from the budget. So, our Parks Committee, just to refresh your memory, consists of presently five members and one alternate. Those members are myself, I'm the chair, Noni Ames is the vice chair, Linda Passan is the secretary, and then the members are Sonny Fogel, Jim Sadie, and Ames Curtis is an alternate. Gretchen Leoni is our Camden Garden Club liaison, and your honor, Bill Chapman is our select board liaison. We meet seasonally, so our last meeting was in November, and our first meeting of the new season is on Wednesday. And I assume that, I mean, I've done an annual report and submitted it to the town office, and I trust you've seen it, or you soon will see it, so I'd rather talk about the future than the past. And so, let me read to you the agenda for Wednesday, that'll give you a glimpse of what we have on our docket. So, the first item on the agenda, and I hope you can attend, Bill.
I plan on it.
Good, is changing our bylaws to enlarge our committee membership to seven, with four needed as a quorum. Now, I know that you have this policy of sticking with the bylaw number and then adding alternates. Frankly, the biggest problem that we've had is getting a quorum. We need a larger pool of people. In the spring and the fall, we have members that are traveling, and in the summer, we have people that are working, and it's very hard to get everybody together when we need them. I've had occasions when we did have a quorum of three, and I was really reluctant to proceed because that's not really a very meaningful discussion or meaningful vote. However, you do what you have to do. We do have now an alternate, Ames Curtis. I would be much happier to upgrade her to a, to a full-fledged member, and to get one more, and to have a committee that's consists of seven people. And I'll tell you why. I don't think that an alternate, first of all, it's, there's a flood of emails that go back and forth. Can you be there? Well, I might, back and forth and back and forth. And then we end up canceling a meeting, you know, the morning of. Well, then, adding in a person who's going to be an alternate is a complication. And also, if I were an alternate, I wouldn't feel very motivated to go to a meeting if I wasn't going to be able to vote. I do want to keep people engaged, and I think the best way to, I think it's a morale issue, and I think the best way to keep people engaged is to have them as full members. So, I am going to, we're going to discuss this on Wednesday. You guys may turn us down, but that's, we're going to discuss it. The next item is going to be one that's, you know, an issue that, it's not an issue, actually. It's an opportunity that's coming up quite soon. And that is planting and maintaining the Pascal Avenue Route 1 traffic island. Last year, we accepted a proposal from Farley and Son, it was a very generous proposal. They sold us the plants, absolutely, it was 60 flats of six plants each. And we paid for those, it was under $600, and then they did the watering. That's not an inconsiderable expense. And contrary to what some might think, it cannot be done by volunteers. It's a large area, and it's the middle of a traffic zone. Farley and Son has a truck, and they can come by at 4 o'clock in the morning and do what needs to be done. So, I'm hoping that we have your encouragement to go ahead and see if we can negotiate that plan again. We're going to discuss that on Wednesday, and you can say yes or no then. We've got a Rockport Garden Club, Merrilia Park cleanup coming up. They initiate that, and they manage it, but we like to give them our full support, and so we'll coordinate that. And Gretchen Leoni is our liaison to do that with. We would like to revisit the planting of what I call the Andre Garden. We took out all of, Mike took all Mugo pines out, which was a big improvement. But we've left exposed this electric power tower, which is really pretty unsightly. And, you know, we need to go down there and take a look at that and see, can we, can we do something different? It may mean some low-growing shrubs, or, I don't know, we just have to take a look at it, and we'll decide, you know, after we've done that. We have paths in Merrilia Park that we need to work on and discuss. The upper path is a peystone path, it's even smaller than peystone, I don't even know what you'd call it, but it's almost heavy-duty sand. And it's on top of some fabric, weed fabric, and that's exposed all the time. We need more gravel in there to cover it, and we need to do some work on that. We've also been discussing a pathway that would come up from the parking lot below and bisect the Merrilia Park. And we've kind of put that discussion off, because we think we need to see what impact a new hotel would have. We like the idea of having access, an easier access from down below, but that's nothing we're going to do right away. We'll just keep our eye on what's going on there. And then we need to plan, we usually, with our next meeting, we'll probably take a. we'll probably take a tour of all the parks and assess what work needs to be done. A lingering issue is the wood fence in front of Merrilia Park.
On the penalty box.
We're determined to get rid of that damn thing. And so you're never gonna hear the end of this until we do. And, um, you know, we have some ideas of how it could be replaced in a more, uh, appropriate and attractive manner, so.
What's the current position on the penalty box?
Oh, don't take him off.
Fun! I love it.
Yeah, well, you do, but we don't, and we're on the committee and you're not.
I, no, I wanted to hear where you all, if, if you still wanted work to be done. When I was liaising to that, you were concerned about the, the penalty box area and.
It's just.
Make sure that the concern still remained.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. And, you know, I think there is, I think the concept is fine. I don't have a problem with that. None of us have a problem with that. I think there's a more user-friendly, let's say, and, um, an attractive way to handle it. We can, you know, I, the thing that I see is maybe having, um, the, the pathway into the meeting room is handicapped accessible in a, technically. And so, if we could have a spur off of that path over to the highest point in the park, I think that would work just as well, and it wouldn't have to be this pertuberance that we have now. So, um, that's a design issue, and I'm not sure we'll resolve it right away, but that's under discussion. Does that answer your question, Owen?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're right. Anything else?
I have one quick, last question.
Right ahead. That's why they're here.
Can you define pertuberance for me?
Your nose.
Your nose.
It protudes.
Protudes.
Protudes, yeah.
Yeah, it's just kind of a.
So, it's like protruding?
A wart. Let's, let's call it a wart.
Okay. I just, I like new words. I've never heard that one, so.
Well, a kind of an old-fashioned word, I guess.
Gotcha. Thank you. Pro-tuberance.
It's a real word.
Almost looked it up.
I didn't come planning to use that word. It just popped out.
Perfect. That was it for me.
Ken? Just to comment on the, on the increase of the size of the committee that you're talking about and, and the difficulty in getting a quorum. It's interesting because, and I think Brendan can talk to this, is we've had some committees go the other way because they've said, "Well, we can't get four people, but we know we can get three, so let's reduce the size so we can have a quorum." So, I think, um, you know, you gotta be, it's a little bit of a double-edged sword. And as far as the alternate members are concerned, I mean, when Ames was here, and I've said this to every alternate member I've approved for a committee in town, is that we, the select board, or at least I do, I expect them basically to function as a full member of the committee. The only thing they can't do is vote unless somebody's absent from the meeting and then they're gonna vote. And I, and I don't think any of the ones that we've appointed feel that they're second-class citizens, and in fact, just the opposite. And, and from our point of view, it helps us because then when somebody finishes their term and decides they're not gonna renew, we have somebody who is ready and willing to step into that position and has some history with the committee and, and is ready and willing to, to really act as a full member. So, I, I, you know, I, I, I don't wanna be, you know.
I mean, the purpose of it was to, was to do exactly what I think you're, the, the, the spot that you're in, which is that it allows you to increase your pool without having to increase the number of people to get a quorum.
Yeah.
I would never apply for a committee to be an alternate. Pure and simple. Uh, now, it's not my decision, and we're gonna discuss it on Wednesday, but I.
And, and, you know, whatever your discussion is, would result in, if, if you choose to, is change, you know, putting in a change to your bylaws, which would come back to us probably in May, you know, either the first or the last meeting in May, for approval. And you would have to come back again and, and, you know, justify, again, talk to us about it.
I mean, I am willing to go through that process. Now, I don't know how the others feel about it. And I even, even talked to Ames about it. We have, we have the sixth person now. All we only need to do is one more.
Yep. And the other, I mean, and the reason that Ames applied was because she wanted to be on the Parks Committee. And, and we could, the Parks Committee was full. Rather than turn her away, we can say, "Well, we can put you on as an alternate." We've had that happen with some other committees, and quite frankly, it's, it's nice, I think, to be able to have these people get on these committees, even though they're full at the moment, because people turn over, and they do, and, and it doesn't leave us in such a lurch, so. Keep that in mind in your discussion.
Okay, I will.
And we will discuss that. Um, I'd like to go back to your, uh, item about the plantings on Pascal, at the Pascal Avenue.
Yeah.
You had given us a rough estimate of it back when we were talking through, going through the budget review. Can you remind us how much that was?
Well, I said we could use a thousand dollars for planting in general.
Mm-hmm.
And that included these plants, and that would leave us four or $500 to do some other planting.
But then there's the watering. Do you remember how much they were?
Oh, no, they did that, oh, didn't I mention, I, no, they did that gratis.
Yeah, last year, but this year, they were gonna charge, I thought you said.
No, I'm hoping that I can negotiate the same deal.
Oh, okay, okay.
And when I say negotiate, they, they generously offered to do that. I, and so I'm hoping that I can get them to make the same offer.
Don't they do the, the bridge water, the watering on the bridge already? Oh, you pay for that? Oh.
Yeah, the garden club pays very generously for those beautiful flowers.
And they do all the, they do the watering in, in Camden as well.
Yeah.
Uh, the traffic islands there and the window boxes and stuff.
The hanging.
So, they've got this truck that goes around early in the morning and does a hell of a lot of water.
Every morning.
Yeah. Uh, any other, and, and since this isn't a regular type of one of our issues, does anybody from the audience like to, you know, add public comment at this time? No? All right. Any other questions? No? Thank you very much for your patience, David.
My pleasure.
See you Wednesday afternoon.
Okay, good.
Uh, the next item we have is, uh, because we tabled the Conservation Commission, consideration of requests by Fox on the Run to continue their operation in the Harbor Park this summer. Uh, and we have Lauren Jellison here. If you.
Nope, there she is, right there.
Yep. And Abby.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
After this, let's remember.
Okay. Yep. We have your request again to, uh.
To serve the town of Rockport, so to speak.
Yes, so this would be the fourth summer down in the Rockport Marine Park. And, um, basically, I'm just here, um, because I became aware that there's a bit of an issue as to where we currently park. And I just wanna make it very clear that I'm absolutely flexible to moving wherever need be within Rockport Marine Park. It really isn't up to me, obviously. And for the last few years, we've just been parking where we've been told. So.
And I think our, uh, our plan, we're moving forward with putting an additional pedestal in. Mike?
Right, it's just gonna be a column, so when she dies, it's gonna.
Yeah.
Mike, we can't hear, the folks at home can't hear you from back there. And David, I'll take your comment in just a moment.
But the goal is to move it over to the other side of the road, over to, by, in the vicinity of where the, where the engine is.
Yep.
Right, we'll, we'll add another pedestal coming out from the one that's there, taking it over to the hill.
Mm-hmm.
And so as you look down in the park, you'll look kind of over the, over the truck. Um, but it will take some time to get that project in place, done. It's, it's gonna take a little bit of time.
We'll get it done sometime this summer?
This summer, right, right.
Yep. I just wanna make sure I know what your little bit of time means.
Yeah.
So, um, and David, you wanted to make a comment? If you'd come on up?
I do wanna make a comment. I've read the proposal.
Well, you, you need to come on up to the, people at home can't hear you back there.
Sorry.
Okay.
David Barry, I live in Rockport, and I've been here a large number of years. I read the proposal, and I'm very much in favor of moving that food truck. In my experience, almost all visitors to this lovely village who have children go down and have the photograph taken in front of Andre. Now, to have a food truck sitting right behind it has, in my view, really made a bad move. Also, in the proposal, they are proposing to keep the electric thing right there. Now, if the food truck is not going to park there, why do we need it? If anybody uses it, there'll be cables, children will chip over. No matter how you mask it, it's still a danger right down there. We had an incident last year with the, um, tent that went up that made a terrible mess of that area. We don't want anything near Andre. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Penny Baum, and I'm a former, past president of the Rockport Garden Club. I'm here with Gretchen Leone, representing the Rockport Garden Club. I had previously sent a letter, um, to the Select Board regarding the placement of the food truck. I had also received, um, a, a personal letter, uh, from a person in Belfast who comes to this park very frequently and was very upset by seeing this red food truck. I'm very pleased that the Select Board is looking to move the food truck. I know that it's very popular. I've eaten there myself, and I know that people generally appreciate your being there. In no way do we want it to be removed from the park. We simply, our focus is to get it out of the line of sight of Andre, to protect our plantings, which we plant and maintain throughout the year. It was unfortunate last year with the tents, that it, you know, did damage some of our plantings. It seems to me as though you are taking the steps that are necessary, um, to correct the situation. We're also concerned about the electrical stand. It's unsightly. I would suggest that if you are proposing to put a shrub or some sort of planting in front of it, that you start out with a fairly large, um, plant that's already somewhat mature, not just a little thing that is going to take time to, um, to grow, but something that will immediately cover and hide that, um, stack because it is in the line of sight of people taking pictures. You know, people do come primarily, come down there to see Andre. They're always taking pictures. Garden club members are there doing the watering. And everybody's so appreciative of how beautiful it does look down there. And I think it just behooves the town, uh, to keep it as pristine as it can without a lot of interference, um, from other extraneous things.
Mr. Chairman, can?
Yep.
It would be, you know, I, I know, speaking for Mike, um, we're not really good at picking out plantings, you know? So, any advice on what would be an appropriate planting would be much appreciated to.
We can, we can certainly work with you on that. We don't have a problem doing that at all.
We can, we can, we certainly can work, we certainly would, uh, would welcome any advice on what kind of plant to put there. Tree, uh, shrub to put there, because the, the Mugo pines were removed at the recommendation of the Parks Committee, I believe, right, Mike? Yeah.
Well, and also with the, with the garden club as well.
And the, so the pedestal was there, and then when we moved the pine, the Mu, are they Mugo pines?
Yes.
I'm saying it right. Mugo pines, and we moved, we moved those, all of a sudden now the pedestal became, you know, really visible.
And putting another Mugo pine there, and it was kinda discussed at our last Rockport Garden Club meeting, you know, is not something that we wouldn't reconsider, but it would have to be maintained and kept in check, not allowed to, you know, get out of, um, out of hand. But anything that would be tall enough and wide enough, um, to obscure that would be, um, would be really beneficial.
How tall is that thing, Mike?
Probably three and a half feet.
Yeah, it's, it's not small, and it, we even thought about painting it, but then we talked to Mike about that, and we were told, no, can't paint it. Has to stay gray. So, um, you know, those were our concerns, and I do, we do appreciate, um, your attention to taking appropriate action to make that area as beautiful as it possibly can be. Thank you.
Yeah.
I am Bonnie Gibbons, and I live in Rockport Village. Um, I want to echo what Penny said, and I'm also here speaking for Leanne Dunton, who's my neighbor. And she's in the garden club, but she couldn't be here today. But the one thing I would like to add, besides what they've just spoken of, is, um, I'd like the Select Board to reconsider whether you really need that electric box there. It is a big ugly thing. It maybe mistakenly got put in the wrong place. We love having the food truck, and if it can be in another place, then that frees up Andre for children to run around without bumping into anything that might be behind a Mugo pine or might be hidden, um, and it would look much prettier. So, if there's any way you can consider just eliminating it, I think it would be the best thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make comment? Come, yep, if you want. You need to come up to the microphone so the people at home can hear.
Well, I understand Mike doesn't, or you don't know when Mike can get to the new electrical box. The permit would be before she starts the truck?
No.
No.
So, what, what happens this summer, or when will it happen?
As far as I can see, it will have to stay there until we get that moved.
Not.
The truck.
The truck.
Yeah.
Right.
She's looking to start me first.
Well, well, um, do you have any idea? Does that mean the truck will be there most of the summer?
Maybe.
It'll probably be there a couple of months, I would expect. Before I take it to that, all wrapped up and done.
Yeah, in, in Mike's defense, there's a lot of other work that has accumulated over the weekend, over the winter, that needs to be prioritized.
Right.
I know he will get to it. You've gotta bring in, uh, special people to do that work, right? You know, at least the electrical component of it. Your people can't, they, your people can dig all they want, but they can't move any electrical.
Right, we'll bury the electrical. We'll get, we'll get it done just as quick as we can. It's just a matter of, does a hundred other things plus to do along with that project.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to remind ourselves that we're here mostly on, on the application.
Yeah.
And, and none of the conversation that, uh, that we've had, which is all good input from the, from the public, none of that, uh, bears any reflection on, on the truck. I mean, they're, it's, it's no fault of their own or anything like, any, any men or that.
You're absolutely right on, on that, but, you know, this is input.
No, I, I, I get that. I get that.
Okay.
So, comma, comma, I, I have a quick question for Abby, which she can do either nod or shake if she doesn't wanna come up. But, um, when we distributed high amperage power throughout the grounds, that was the, was the appropriate place to put that pedestal to feed back to, uh, it tents and whatever that might be up to that?
Exactly. That's where all the power comes up and snubs out and ends.
Right.
So, for any event at all, not, you know, we put it there, it was sort of sidebar that we added something for a food truck, but it's mainly for events and sort of where it had to be, and Mike connected that.
But, you know, one of the things is, though, we've already directed Rick to revisit the policy of tents in the park, and I think we have a moratorium on them for at least this summer.
Well, to start, yeah.
To start.
Okay.
And the tents over Andre will ever be. How is it over?
So, but by the very nature of your designing, uh, that to be the jump-off place for, for, uh, power to go over by, uh, the other side of the, of the circle, that all is indicative that, that, I mean, we're facing facts, that, that pedestal is gonna stay where it is. Okay. So.
Yep.
All right. So, uh, and some of the things that haven't been considered, you know, from trees and everything, it's just a nice mahogany box or, or something that.
Because it really, you know, granted, that actually is probably, even the vicinity that it had to be, probably the most hidden because of what, what was planted there. And, and it wasn't, you know, it wasn't really brought up until it was moved, and, and it is glaring, and it is right there. But it was hidden, you know, I would say that there was some thought into placing that where it was the most hidden as it could be at the time, you know? So, I think plantings will certainly help, but, um, you know, and there would have to be something there anyway, even if we took out the actual, you know, function of it to plug things in, there has to be a, a transfer box.
Right, okay. So, my, my point being is that perhaps, rather.
So my, my point being is that perhaps rather than saying, this is an eyesore here, let's add another, you know, four or five foot radius things to it, which makes it all of a sudden the 20 by 20 foot impediment is just, you know, something, something that goes over it, comes up.
A little pretty, like, you know, certain, instead of re-boxed.
That's, that's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking.
We could easily make it, you know, do it up.
If I continue, she's going to need to come up to the microphone.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, you're absolutely right.
You're just asking for her to nod and this has gone on and on.
I'm, I'm, I just got shot by my own, by my own team.
Yeah, thank you.
You're right, you're right. I apologize, so, so...
There's no reason why we couldn't sort of build something around it and, and plant around it and, and make it, you know, nicer looking for sure, but I, I don't see the answer in trying to change around because it would have to go somewhere in that vicinity and then something would have to be right there as a transfer for the power that ends there.
A junction box to get it on there.
Right, a junction box, exactly.
Okay. So I, I wanted to point that out.
Okay.
And I also wanted to say that there has to be a balance. I, I can't find it right now, but in, when I read over the packet late last week, the, there was one complaint from somebody that said, oh my gosh, kids were all over Andre. And to me, kids going up and touching and jumping on top of that statue and everything is far more important and, and more valuable than what we plant around it. So I just think there has to be this balance between the different points of view of, of what that park looks like and how it's used because I would rather have 20 kids, you know, getting as close to a seal as they can than it looking nice for people to come and paint, you know? So that's my particular input and I may be way out of line, but there we are.
And we're going to have to at some point, talking about the seal itself, his face is about ready to fall apart. So that's going to be, that's, yes, so that'll be a...
Oh, no, you killed that, Brian!
That'll be a big issue, big issue. So we should, we do need to think about that in the near future as well.
That's a maintenance thing too.
Yeah.
Artistic maintenance.
Okay. Look, let's go back to the issue of Fox on the Run.
Moving on, I would like to, I would like to make a motion that we, thank you, I would like to make a motion to approve the request for the renewal of the peddler's permit requested by Lauren Jellison for Fox on the Run.
Second.
To approve the approve.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just add that it was in the packet, but we have had a few complaints as we have heard about tonight, but we've had an awful lot of positive comments about the service being in the park as well and I don't want those to get forgotten because they do far outweigh the complaints. Not that the complaints don't have some merit, we have, we have addressed them, but we get far more positive comments about the service being there.
Because you cannot forget those tacos. It's just unforgettable.
Other comment down there? Oh, all right. Then I'll call for the vote, all in favor of the motion. As approved.
And I apologize for the, the microphone, the microphone thing.
Thank you for your patience.
You're the one that keeps telling me.
I know, I know, I know.
Oh, I've been trying to...
You didn't kick me hard enough.
No, I'm trying to, I'm signaling her.
We're going to take a three minute break.
Three minutes?
I...
Let me know that stuff, Juniper.
You ready?
You're up.
Okay, we're back in session. Our three minute break turned into seven as I expected. The next item is consideration of FY18 budget changes being recommended by the Budget Committee to us. And we have that along, in front of us along with Jan's vote, what Jan Rosenbaum, the chair of that committee, sent to us as detail. We don't have to take any action on that, on this tonight, other than if we wish, we can just tell the budget, or our finance director, okay, make it happen so we can see what it looks like come next Tuesday. Basically, there are four. They want to add $300 to the town clerk budget to, for a cell phone stipend. They want to add $1,203 to the park and recs budget to purchase the remaining of the trashcans that had been requested that we cut. From the library, they removed $5,000, I think that was for architect?
Yes.
And put, and effectively are putting that money into the parks and recreation line to help with the construction of the cost on the Route One sidewalk project. That's the ongoing project, or not ongoing, the one that is, we're doing with Camden to bring the sidewalk down from Quarry Hill area down to about, well, Maritime Farm, the bus stop and maybe a little beyond that, Country Way, et cetera. Owen?
I was just, I had your hand up.
He's having a hallelujah moment.
Yeah, I, because I thought it was for the Route 90, Route 1 and I couldn't figure out why they wanted money for that, but that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, they want, their, their recommendation on that is to put it into offset so that next year we don't have as big a butt bite that we have to take. So.
And I would note that in their minutes, the votes were essentially unanimous with a couple of abstentions, except for that last item that was a five to four vote.
Where are you seeing that?
I don't see any five, four votes.
The five to four votes are five to four against.
No, it's, yeah, it's up there.
Oh, two, Roman numeral two, D. Oh, yeah. So...
Oh, that was on, the vote was on the motion, five, four. But then they voted on that article at a higher rate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The motion was to add the 5,000, seconded by Thomas Murphy, vote on the motion, five, four, zero abstain.
But then they all, they voted unanimously to, to recommend?
Where do we see that? We don't, no.
Well, the article recommendations...
The motion is to, is to do the action and is a five, four split.
Yeah, right.
It's to recommend the action.
Yes.
Then they had to recommend the, the warrant articles and they, you know, which, that would have been in the, which warrant article it was.
Is Article 16?
Yeah, Article 16 was nine to nothing.
Yeah.
Which included that, so they voted five to four, so basically they approved adding it, but it was a five to four vote, but then when it came to recommending the entire article, they voted unanimously on that.
Two of those, any chance?
Nope.
Well, well, are we, Mr. Chairman, what's your pleasure?
Well...
What action are we about to take?
Actually, we have, we don't have to take any action on this. It's, you know, if we want, you know, we can say, you know, this sounds very reasonable and we'll make the changes next week.
Do we have the letter referred to in Item C expressing their, there was suggestion made that the Budget Committee send a letter to the Select Board with their concerns about why the library budget is reduced by $5,000? Is that in here?
Jan? It's in our packet, let's see what it's...
Yeah, we got a pack, we got, yeah, that, you know, it's all part of that one right there.
Yeah, we're in the DOT on, on the screen, so...
That's their reasoning.
Yeah. We, we don't have to take any action or we can say, well, which, we can think we'll do it next week or we can say, make it, make the change right now so it shows up next week when we see it. That would require a motion to actually accept and put these changes into the budget that we will be working on next week.
I guess my comment is that we worked hard on the budget to try to keep the increase down and try to keep the mill rate down. We've blown that out of the water with the Public Works budget. The changes that they're suggesting are an order of magnitude less than what we're going to have to do in the Public Works budget. You know, the net change here that they're recommending basically is...
$1,500.
300 plus the 1,200, so $1,500, so I don't have a problem with it.
So, well, let's just, we can deal with it in a couple of minutes.
We can deal with it next week.
Okay.
You know, these, the numbers which we see in here are the ones that have been published for the public hearing or are out there, you know, in, you know, in preparation for our meeting next Tuesday. We change, we can change those next Tuesday.
Okay.
Any number on there, we can change.
Do you want an indication of what kind of conversations it can be like or do we not care?
I mean, I think we probably should have at least a short conversation about it so that next week when we're doing all, you know, 25 articles, we don't have to stop and deal with this.
Thirty-three or thirty-four.
Yeah.
And to give, and to be fair to the Budget Committee, to give them an idea of, of if we're going to make, if we're not going to accept the recommendations so they have some thought, time to put some thought into it.
I've already sent a text to Jan Rosenbaum that he should watch our meeting from about eight o'clock on, but...
He'll probably fall asleep by now.
Well, if he hasn't already watched, but, you know, because, you know, just to give them a heads up that they're going to have some work to do, but they probably want to be here on Tuesday as well to participate in our discussion or at least hear what our discussion is on all the changes that we might be making. So remind you, we can change any number on that budget next week, you know, any, any number in this book.
So, I mean, I'd like to go to bed at a reasonable hour tonight, but I still think that $5,000 for the library is, is appropriate.
Leaving the 5,000 in?
It's my personal opinion.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I was going is that would be a hard, take it out for me.
I can, I can, I can tell you 10 different places that that would be responsibly spent.
Absolutely.
What's your opinion then on the raising of adding 5,000 to the parks and rec for that Route One sidewalk, which effectively we're thinking they were just transferring it?
Again, must to Ken's comment, 5,000 this year, 5,000 next year, that's, that's down in, in the, in the little stuff.
Okay.
And we, we have adopted that strategy for, you know, for, for, you know, big trucks and what have you and things like that, but to, quite honestly, to put 5,000 aside for the thing next year, it's, you know, I, I'm not passionate about that either way.
Yeah, if they feel it's appropriate, I guess I'm inclined to defer to the Budget Committee on that one, I'm just not on item four.
And I think, I mean, we had an explanation of the library, why we put that money into the library budget when we had the Budget Committee and I still think that's valid. So I, I would agree that I'm, I'm less inclined to take that out. If we don't spend it, we don't spend it. It does mean the mill rate goes up, but not as much as the Public Works. Like I say, this is all small potatoes compared to what we're going to have to do to the Public Works budget.
Mm-hmm. Owen?
Oh.
Good. Okay. We've given the, the idea here and courage.
So you've been...
But you need to weigh, weigh that in their deliberations, so. The next item. Thank you, Megan. We have another request by Maine Department of Transportation to move overweight vehicles over our roads. Why the one that we passed, approved last meeting doesn't carry to this one is still a mystery to me, other than they have a different project number on this one. And they did change for their recommended mo, uh, motion agreement, is they did change it from city of Rockport to town of Rockport.
Town of Rockport, there we go.
What is this subject, ultra-thin bonded wearing course? What is that?
Five-eighth inch skim coat that as soon as you drive a heavy truck over, it'll peel right back off.
They just painted on, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's a minor...
I think what you're, you're looking at this municipal construction bond thing, Owen?
No, he's looking at the subject in this, in this quest posted.
Ultra-thin bond wearing course.
It seems like this is some new thing that they're doing is requesting permission for all of this stuff when they, they've never done that before and I don't know why.
Maybe they got to see what...
Well, and I guess, I mean, we can do that, I don't have a problem with it, but how is this different than what we approved before?
Because it has a specific project number on it, rather than giving you a blanket of proof.
Because the suggested motion we have here doesn't refer to any project number.
Right.
So... So do we need to put a project number in the motion?
Well, don't we also have the recommendation that we just let Rick take care of this from here on out?
Right. You can refer, you can put the project number in it and then give me the authority to do it in the future.
Yeah, which we're gonna, which we're gonna discuss next.
Well, I just want to be voting on these every time.
Have we ever said no to this? Would we ever say no?
This is, this is only the second time it's come up, and it only came up last month, which actually came several months before that, but we couldn't figure out what they were asking for, since one department was even saying we, they already have that.
Yeah, one department. One department says they don't have to ask us permission.
Yeah.
And one part of the department says, he didn't understand why we were even being asked, because they already have kind of blanket permission to do that.
All right, well, I'm going to move to approve the Maine Department of Transportation, MDOT, request for permission to move overweight vehicles and equipment over town-owned roads in conjunction with MDOT project number 21984 dot 00 Route 17 paving.
Second.
Move in a second. Any further discussion?
Absolutely not.
All in favor? That passes. Now, so we don't have to do this again. I've asked the town manager to propose a blanket authority to him to do this, you know, when it comes up, because, you know, it's the same thing.
I move to authorize the town manager slash road commissioner or public works director to approve Maine Department of Transportation requests, actually, strike that.
You want to name one or the other?
Let me start over. I move to authorize the town manager to approve Maine Department of Transportation requests for permission to move overweight vehicles and equipment over town-owned roads that are for normal maintenance operations for the 2017 road construction season.
Second.
Move in a second.
Oh, you only want to do it for the season?
No.
Yes, actually.
Right there.
In our meeting, that was my suggestion, just because, I mean, things could change. If we have one year where the state comes in and totally wrecks our roads.
Is that the meeting where you guys smoke cigars?
Then, yeah, that's right, then, you know, we might want to re, we might want to revisit that. I do think that we could do this as an annual thing and do it every year, and as long as everything is going fine, it's not a problem, but if there was a year where there was going to be a really big project, then we might want to ask for the bond, which we legally can do.
Is there some way to incorporate this into institutional memory? We'll almost certainly forget to do it on an annual basis.
Bill's pretty good at that. I have made it a note, well, assuming I get reelected, I have made it, made a note that we would bring this up like in January and just give him a, you know, another blanket authority.
Okay.
You know, so, further discussion? Owen?
My only hesitancy is, I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess it doesn't really matter, and Rick is the road commissioner.
Mm-hmm.
My only concern is that sometimes having a couple more eyeballs, and this is not a critique of Rick's eyeballs, it's just having more eyeballs on something, sometimes you catch that, that thing that the state was trying to sneak in, or hey, with this one, we really should ask them for a bond.
I would, I would always go to Mike and potential, Mike and also Will Gartley, our town engineer, for their recommendation before I would approve something like that. I, I never do anything without checking with Mike.
Which, which is a better set of eyes than this.
And the reason that I, I put only the town manager in the motion, I changed the motion from what's, because we can direct the town manager to do something, we can't direct anybody else, and if we don't trust the town manager to seek the appropriate advice of his department heads, then we have a bigger problem than this motion. And I, and I do trust him, let me, let me make that perfectly clear.
And, you know, to go back, you know, what we just approved was reconstruction, just laying a little thin film over Route 17. So, we have the motion to allow the town manager to handle these in the future for the rest, remainder of this year. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Who seconded the vote?
Jafed.
Thank you.
He seconded it before I finished making the motion.
I tried to.
He wanted to move this along. Okay, now we're back to unfinished business. And our next item, I gotta get down to it, is an update regarding commercial marijuana establishments.
Okay, let me get to my stuff. You got my, you gotta get, I gotta go back up now.
You gotta go back up?
Yeah, 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 because we're out of order.
We're out of order, so.
He's got to go higher in it to talk about marijuana, huh?
Cut it out.
We have my, I have a PowerPoint there.
Oh, you want to, you want, you want to see PowerPoint?
Yeah, there's a PowerPoint, there's a PowerPoint there someplace, and it's.
Forgot about it already, that short-term memory loss, Rick.
And am I, am I aiming this thing at the, no, I'm aiming that, this thing over there someplace, to do the PowerPoint.
What's it called, update regarding?
Yes, there you go.
On the PowerPoint.
No, not, no, no, not that one, no.
Not that one?
No, there, there you go, commercials.
Okay.
So how do we get it started?
Hang on, we're going to go make sure they're on the top.
So, uh.
I need to go to slideshow and start the show.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just can't see that far.
One more down?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, so, this is what Jamie and I, as my memo, my backup talks about, we've, we've spent a good deal of time, and as Owen can attest, the legislature's spent a good deal of time dealing with and talking about, where do we go from here? The referendum was passed, it's legal now for, for personal use, and you can, you can grow some marijuana personally, and that's legal now, but what, how do we deal with regarding commercial marijuana establishments? So, one thing we need to keep in mind is the, we had a huge voter turnout, 83.5% of the registered voters voted in last November's election. So pretty much everybody that wanted to vote on the subject, voted. And of the, the 83%, I think it was only about 100 people chose not to vote on this item. So a lot of people in, in Rockport made their opinions known, known. And the state, the state opinion was basically it passed, but just barely, it basically was a 50-50 split, but it passed 50.2% to 6%, and no said there was a 49.74%. For us, it, it ended up being 50.2% and 49.8%. So we're right in, in the same ballpark as the state's response. So, what that tells us is, we, you know, the voters passed the, the personal use, but we don't have a sense of what they feel about commercial use. So.
Wait a second, just got to throw it out there, the retail sales was part of the whole scheme.
Yeah, but the, the referendum only dealt with, the, the retail sales is, is dealt with at a local level, once it's legal, then the town decides whether we want to allow it to be.
Right, and I, I get that, I'm just saying that in addition to for recreational use, possession cultivation, the, the rulemaking on retail sales was part of that.
It sets that up.
So, so a more state, a more fair statement would be, it appears to be 50-50 on the question of retail sales.
Mm-hmm, right. Yeah, and, I mean, I, if it was 60-40, we'd have a better sense, I think, but it came up pretty even, and, and I think it, I don't know that many towns in Maine, I think there were a few towns that had a more overwhelming support, some, a few towns, but many towns, it was a real close vote.
You say, if it would be 60-40, we would have a better sense, what, what do you mean by that?
You'd have a better sense of, if 60% of the people felt, voted in favor, you'd have a better sense of maybe than, a lot of those people would also be, would favor retail sales and commercial cultivation, you know, but we, they haven't had that question asked of them yet.
Okay.
So, but it does, the vote doesn't really give us guidance on retail sales, commercial cultivation, and another thing that came up is part of our, the stuff that Jamie and I have been attending, has to be, a side thing is testing facilities, and I think the legislature is dealing with that at some level also, in the rulemaking.
Our testing facility, if this town were to say okay to some or all of the other aspects of the selling, or the, or the commercial producing of, does the testing thing, is that a statewide thing, or is that, that has to be a local thing as well?
That, that'll also be a local thing, I believe, and the town could, I think the town can have any level of what they decided to do. You know, the town could say, we're, we're okay with, with selling, but we don't want to have commercial growing operations, or we don't want to have testing facilities here. But the state.
There's a lot more to sit about that, I mean, you can do it with the town of York, wait for a lawsuit. How do you?
Jamie Franco from the Planning and Development Department. Just on that one point, Rick, so you don't get stuck in your presentation, if we do not define these uses separately in our land use, there might be no way to tell them apart from other things in the land use ordinance, in particular, lab testing, but if we do, we can call them out and regulate them. The specific ones that would contradict the state law, we won't really know until the rulemaking, but I don't think that, I think we can stay silent on testing, and it would just reach us as, is this office professional use or something else that's defined in the ordinance, or not? So the, the approach that, assuming Rockport does anything in this space, would be to define the uses. Once that is done, they don't have to be permitted anywhere in particular, that could be a later step. So the, I, there's more, and I think Rick will set it up better, but the, the question you asked is, can you do lab testing in Rockport? We wouldn't have any way to stop them right now, other than the fact that we have our excuse that we're waiting for state rulemaking on it, because the use resembles very much the other permitted uses.
So, you know, the state is working on the rulemaking, and they're, they're working very diligently, you know, at, at the state level, there's, there's a lot of effort going into this, about, you know, what are, what are the next steps, and, and you, you can speak to this better than I can, because you're up there, but I know that they're working a lot, they're working really hard on this.
They're working really hard, one could make an argument that they're working around in circles. I mean, they've had three work sessions on figuring out if it's going to stay in agriculture, or if it's going to go to Bureau of Alcoholic Beverages and Lottery Operations, is it a hybrid, and then you have to talk about the elephant in the room, which is the governor, and trying to figure out if, get two-thirds support for inevitable veto, and so it's been really interesting, they, they've been working very hard, but it, and, not but, but and, it appears as though not much as far as forward progress. So, lots of hard work, and I could, I could be wrong, I don't attend their meetings, but I, I liaison with a lot of folks that are on that committee, and I talk with a lot of folks, and I know that they're very much struggling with it, and they've kind of broken into those two separate camps.
Yeah. But the rules are expected to be, expected to be finalized in February of 2018.
Oh, yeah, we got that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's some people that think it will get extended past that, but there's others that, you know, are committed to getting it done for February 18th. So, I mean, the good news is we have time, the bad news is we need to, we need to use the time that we have wisely, and, and, and I, I think if, if we're going to move forward with developing ordinance, we, we should be moving forward with that at some point, before we get to that February of 2018, or else I think we, we could be, find ourselves up against a wall. As far as, you know, I've attended two different things on this, and, and, you know, there's three things that I've gotten out of this, is that it's very, this is a very complicated issue, and there's a lot of layers to this. As I said, the legislature is working really hard, trying to figure this out, and, you know, I, they'll, they'll figure it out event, eventually, but it's not, it's not an easy The next thing is that it's, this is a huge new industry. It's expected that it's, it's, the predicted annual sales is over $250 million a year, ahead of the potato industry, but just behind the lobster industry, at $495 million. It's unclear at this point, at this time, if, if it has any, if that money is going to have any local benefit, are we going to get any of that money back? They're still working on, on all of that.
And, and I think we have two or three bills for the Legislative Policy Committee, a meeting on Thursday, that deal with local sales tax on commercial marijuana or retail marijuana.
Oh, because I totally co-sponsored a bill that would allow municipalities to set their own sales tax.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
No, but it wasn't specific to marijuana.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's another one.
And I'd love to pick your brains later about that.
That's a completely different issue, yeah.
Well, it's only halfway different issue.
Well, I've got background on that, if you, you know, I can build, I can build you the steep beverage history if you want.
Well, and the, finally, the last thing is that it's, I think it's important, we need to be prepared when the rules are established, we need to be prepared, that we've thought through and we've gone through a process, and we know what our direction is going to be, because Maine is a brand-new market, there's only eight states in the country that marijuana is legal in, so it's a, it's a brand-new open market, and it, and one of the things is, Rockport does not have what the big businesses are going to be looking for, to, to locate here, we'll, we'll likely see some of the smaller operations, but we're not going to, I, we don't have big, big vacant buildings where big commercial growing operations are going to want to locate, it's going to be hard for them.
One statistic on that, the, somewhere in Maine law, according to Amy Chow and Ted Kelleher, there's provision for 800,000 square feet of commercial growing space.
Canopy, yeah.
That would likely be indoors, maybe it involves many more other square feet, but it's still a lot of zeros.
This is statewide, or?
This is for Maine, but a study that Amy and Ted are in touch with, read the same law and interpreted as likely need for 2 million square feet in the state of Maine, indoors, for growing commercial marijuana.
I hope they use photovoltaics, rather than, than just suck energy out of the grid.
It's going to be a huge power draw, because they, they, it's all done under lights.
Well, and keep in mind that our land use ordinances permit the maximum size of 10,000 square feet in a single building, in some areas, not in all areas.
Right, and those wouldn't necessarily be the areas, there's, there's plenty of open space to go elsewhere, I mean, available space, but Rick, this is to your point of how, in what ways might some of that revenue be captured locally? The real estate is one.
So, so where does this leave us, all this information? The question of allowing retail sales, commercial cultivation, and, you know, testing is, is that the discretion of the town? I mean, you could easily just do a prohibition, but, you know, I, I don't think we're there yet.
Is that, can I interrupt a minute? Is that going to be true? I mean, is it possible the state could make a rule that says this is allowed everywhere, and the towns don't have a say in it? I hope not.
I don't think so.
No, no.
That would fall under.
That would fall under home rule.
Right, it'd be, be, just like alcohol, you can have, have a, you know.
I just want to make sure.
Right, yeah, I mean, you can't, it's very similar to alcohol, you can't, you can't say in any town, it's illegal to consume it, but the town has the ability to say it's illegal to sell it.
Yeah, they could put in a rule like you can't have a retail establishment within so many feet of a school or a church or a.
But you can also say that you can't smoke cigarettes in public places.
Oh, yeah.
So then that is in effect, you can't consume it in public.
You could, you, you know, they can.
Well, other than the social clubs.
Yeah, no.
That, part of that law, a part of that referendum was.
It's a private place, it's not a public place.
To your question, Ken, this won't solve anything, but the legal standard is that the towns, under the Medical Marijuana Act, which is 2009 Act, the towns cannot frustrate the purpose of it by, say, regulating that caregivers or dispensaries can't be anywhere, but they can't, you know, that it may be forced to be somewhere.
Well, that's an important distinction, actually, if, if it follows through to this law, because that was, if that's the case, and that would say, we can't blanket prohibit it, but we can regulate where it is.
That's the, that's the bar set by the, the Medical Marijuana Act, that doesn't mean they'll, they'll live up to that, yeah.
Superseded here.
So, Mr. Chairman, I assume that we're hinting. So, Mr. Chairman, I assume that we're hinting, with Rick's presentation, we're hinting at, that this is, there's a lot of information to be done with this, and I assume that what we're really doing is talking about it for this much, so that we can, uh, schedule a time for a workshop and, and talk it out.
Well, it's really sort of leading up to, do we wanna put a non-binding referendum on the June ballot, asking whether or not they wanna see, and, and, you know, there's a, a draft of it in here, the attorney provided to us.
Whether they wanna see what?
Um, commercial operation, social clubs, allowing retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs to operate in the town of Rockport. And to develop, and the development of amendments to the land use ordinance to regulate the location and operation of those uses.
So, if we were to-
It's a non-binding.
But if we were to do that, we would do that prior to the ordinance review committee?
Yes.
Giving us any guidance?
Right, well, that-
Why would we do that?
Well, because if the townspeople don't want it, then there's no point in the ordinance review committee going through and diving down through all the levels and saying, well, if they want it, then we'll do it here, 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 here.
And remember, the, the, the bond article for the library failed by nine votes.
Yeah.
This one passed by ten votes in Rockport. So, it's a very narrow window, and, like with the library, we don't know exactly why they voted against there, we don't know why ten more people voted in favor than not. Because if they were, most of them were thinking, this is just gonna allow me to smoke marijuana in my own home, and I can draw, you know, grow five plants, or something like that.
You don't know what they were thinking.
I know we don't. This gives us a better indication.
Mr. Chairman, I might credit myself too highly, but I understand Brendan's question a little differently.
Okay.
Y O R C before the, the select board is, um, don't use the O R C for policy. You guys gotta figure out whether with the voters' help or not, if you wanna regulate in this space. The O R C isn't your conscience, they're, they're your arms and legs.
So, I mean, if, just getting to, back to the, I think there's, there's probably more choices, but I think there's three choices, you can do nothing, and just let the rules committee, the rules play out, and see how it falls. You can ask, you know, one of the, the, kind of the sledgehammer approach is, you could do like some towns is, just, just say, immediately, we're gonna ask the voters to prohibit it, and just take that action. Or, you could ask the voters to get a sense of, what are they thinking? You know, do they want us to come back? It could be that we come back with an ordinance change, and they look at that and say, well, yeah, thanks for all the work, but we still don't want it. Or maybe it passes.
And that would be secret ballot?
That would be on a secret ballot.
This non-binding, yeah.
The non-binding thing would be a secret ballot. So, it, it gives, at least, it gives you a sense of where, you know, how supportive of they, they likely to be, I mean, the, you could take the really, um, negative approach, which is to just put that on the ballot now. But it, it, it assumes that we don't, that is an assumption that we, we're assuming we don't want it here. The other approach is to say, we, we're not sure what the voters, we want some more guidance from the voters. And if, if they vote in favor of it, we'll develop ordinance changes and bring it back to the voters in November.
Owen?
So, in the, uh, the article that you put out here, it says allowing retail marijuana establishments. Does that phrase, retail marijuana establishments, cover the cultivation, the testing, and the retail sales?
We think that Phil was just trying to help us put it in simpler terms.
Right.
Because that is not all of the uses that are contemplated in the act.
Because I did have that language in there, and he took it out.
He being?
The lawyer.
Attorney.
If we, you know, at least could put in there other, you know, and other uses contemplated in the act, but currently prohibited in the town, you know, maybe there's more. But, we really wanna make a ballot question that gets a clear answer, and that's not, that doesn't always mean add more.
The retail side is what people will see.
You know, like, why would you ask them, what about lab testing? In other words, yeah, yeah.
I mean, this is a, this would be a non-binding question, and then ultimately, this board, as Jeff has suggested, we have to decide whether we wanna promote this or not, and if we decide we wanna promote it, then we would task the O R C with saying, okay, we would like to have, or not, um, retail sales. Because at some point, we're gonna have to have an ordinance vote on this. Doing nothing means that we're basically gonna say, well, we're gonna allow it. Because right now, in our ordinance, we have, you know, the land uses, one of them is retail sales, without any qualifiers, and if we don't have anything in there that says retail sales of marijuana, then somebody's gonna say, well, I'm applying, coming to the planning board, I'm gonna wanna have a retail marijuana shop, and it's allowed under your u, use ordinance as a retail sales, and if it's not illegal by state law, then they can do it.
The town of York is exploring the do-nothing, uh, approach right now, and they're in, uh, at the law court, the case is called Briggs versus Town of York. And they happen to have an existing legally con, non-conforming manufacturing use in a shorelands zoning location, just ridiculous set of facts that, that got them started. And then, the owner said, I know what I'll do, I'll change from what I was doing to growing pot. And it's not a change in use, because this is just more manufacturing. And so, yeah, that town is, is dealing with the weakness in its, um, defined terms. And you go down the list of permitted uses that we have in our ordinance, and do nothing means just wait for that same problem. So, I, I recommend making, um, defined terms based on all the uses contemplated in the ordinance, in the, in the state law, the new law. And don't worry about prohibiting or permitting them anywhere for, if you can't get to that in the, in the first available town meeting. But define them in the ordinance, and prohibit them everywhere until you decide where they should be prohibited. Or, choose that other path, and aggressively pursue all of this new business that's coming down the pipe.
My suspicion is that, you know, and I, but I don't know, it's just a suspicion, that we'll come back with a probably fairly close vote, um, fifty-fifty vote. You know, on this, on this, um, referendum. But it may come out, you know, if it comes out sixty-forty, you know, then you, you have a little bit more direction. I think if it's fifty-fifty, you'd have to go through the, you'll have to go, um, through making the changes in the ordinance. If it comes out that it's, a majority of people don't, you know, a majority of people say, no, we don't want retail in, in our town, then you can just move forward with the prohibition, um, and be reasonably certain it would pass. Uh, but there's a lot of work, uh, that, this, this, um, dealing with this and the O R C could take up most of the time of the O R C.
Well.
I mean, it's a lot of work.
Maybe, but it's, I think we have, we have to give the O R C direction. And we can give the O R C direction by discussing it among ourselves, or we can ask, we can use input from the town from a non-binding, non-binding question to help guide us. But ultimately, we have to provide them with direction, because something has to be done with the land use ordinance. Whether it's an out-and-out prohibition, or allowing it in certain areas, or whatever, but we have to, we have to address it, in my opinion, we have to address it in the ordinance, one way or the other.
Say that again, you said, uh, whether it's an outright prohibition, and the second thing you said was, or?
Or we decide to allow it in certain parts of certain zones, or something like that. I mean, we could say, well, we're gonna allow it in the nine oh seven, or something like that.
It being the sale of?
Yes, retail sale, yeah. We can't prohibit the use, that's, you know, or, I mean, personal use, that's already enshrined in law.
So, if it's not prohibited now, why do you have to do anything in order to make it legal?
If we want to say, it's only here.
I understand you have to specify zone by zone, whether or not it's allowed in that zone.
Right.
But if you don't do anything, isn't it allowed in all the zones?
Then it's allowed in any zone.
Well, it's allowed anywhere where retail sales are.
It'll be allowed, it'll fall into, it'll fall into other uses, basically, in the land use table, there's-
Where retail sales are anything.
Retail sales, or there may be agricultural, or maybe farm stands, but that can-
Or in York, manufacturing.
I think that's, that's gonna be the work of the O R C, is to go through and look and see, okay, you know, where, where, what uses do we currently have where this could fall into that use?
I, I submit that, in, in either thing that we're likely to do, putting a non-binding, do you wanna see commercial sales of marijuana in, in the town? Or, or any other shade of that, I, I submit that there's a lot of unknowns, and if we don't, A, educate ourselves, and in that process, educate those people who are interested in following along with our education, that it's, it's gonna be a vote based on, uh, fears or delights. You know, it's gonna be the same fifty-one versus forty-nine percent. So, to have anything meaningful, um, if we were to put a non-binding vote on June's ballot, I think we owe it to the town beforehand to have at least one workshop that's well-attended and broadcasted, and having, and available, to talk about all the, all the various things, because I don't know what, first of all, I have no idea what a testing facility means, and, and what it does. So, that's part of what I would make a decision on, not knowing anything about it. I really have no idea whether the various, you know, directions one could go in, in retail sales and all this. So, I, I, I think, I think that we, we need to have a time that's not, you know, ten o'clock at night, where we are, um, investigating only this subject, and doing it for the benefit of the rest of people in Rockport.
And I, well, I think that's a great idea, and if that is the route that we go, and I would, I would encourage us to do that, I'd be happy to talk to some folks that I know are working on it more intimately, and see if I could get them, so, a committee member that's been following all of it, and then, uh, some of the folks that have really been following it on the kind of advocacy side, to answer questions about what, what they're seeing, what the, the feel is, and what's technically allowed, what is a testing facility? What does that look like? And so, I think we should do that, and I'm happy to try to ask some folks if they can show up and answer questions.
Just, just recently, I attended a Maine, uh, Town and City Managers workshop on it. It was a whole day, another day-long thing, and one of the speakers was a city manager from Colorado. And he, he pretty clearly said that he was dead-set against it, when it first came, it first happened in Colorado. He said, I, he had the opinion the sky was gonna fall, and everything was gonna, you know, the world was gonna go into chaos. And he said, the reality is, that there, you know, there's been some bumps in the road, and they've, you know, they've had some difficult times, but in the large, you know, largely, it has leveled itself out, and it's not been the problem that he thought it was gonna be. And the establishments that come in are typically, you know, he showed some slides, and the, the only thing that I could equate it to is be, be going to the, uh, Apple Store. I mean, some of the facilities that they have in his, his city were these really well-signed, clean, lit, very professional Apple Store-looking facilities, that it's, it's business to them, to the, many of the companies that are working in Colorado now. It's not, as he put it, it's not the Cheech and Chong operations that you expect. He said, it's the big business people that are investing big dollars in this, and making money, and they're not willing to do it poorly. And they, they, they do a good job at it. And he said, the sky didn't fall.
And on that point about testing, sorry to jump you, Jeff, the, uh, there are a lot of good jobs in it, and what it's about is the uniformity of distribution of the, whatever you call it, THC maybe, throughout the product, you know, if you've got a, a brownie or something that you're supposed to nibble on, and all of the, um, the good stuff is in one spot, and you get a bite, and it's not uniformly distributed, then some, there's no, there's no other way to regulate dosage than by, yeah, uniform distribution in the product.
So, I, I'd like to, I'd like to re-characterize what I was looking for. I'd like to have a forum that, that we, uh, host to learn more about all this. Because, I mean, it could go on for hours, but, um, I, I think, I think we owe it to ourselves to do that, and, and to go forward with that. And quite honestly, we should do that, whether we have a non-binding vote or not, I mean, um-
Is there benefit to do something like that in conjunction with some of the other towns that must be going through the exact same-
That's, that's why I call it a forum, we could, we could do a, a four-town, six-to-six-town kind of-
What's the, uh, timing of?
Because, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my ellipse there. Because among other things, there may be towns adjacent to us or nearby that are more appropriate for one aspect of the, um, you know, manufacturing, as you call it. It might be, everyone's talking about big business coming in, and, and buildings, I presume the buildings are only there because of, uh, of uniformity and/or, uh, security.
Season round, year-round.
But, uh, but certainly, I have to imagine some enterprising person could make money on something that's outdoors. And there may be, uh, uh, places that are around here that are more suited for it. So, having a, a six-town forum makes a fair amount of sense.
But, yeah, and then we have to deal with what the other issues are there. The thing is, you know, if we're gonna try to organize a forum at this time and get somebody in, it's, the forum would be after we have to put anything onto our June warrant, if we want to have it on.
We wanted to do that.
That was my question, is what's the timing on the, on putting something on in June? And if we wait till November, is it too late, uh, in, in order to get the results, and then, and then have the O R C develop something in time for February of twenty eighteen?
Can I? If we feel like we don't know what would be responsible without, what would be responsible for our community, and we have been put in this position in order to try and make responsible decisions for our community, if we feel like we can't do that without doing some more research, without rolling up our sleeves and digging in, why do we place such emphasis on whatever people happen to feel off the cuff, based on whatever information they happen to have on the ballot? Why, why is that?
And, and to make it worse-
Saying it's difficult, it's complicated, there's a lot to it, you should see how other communities are dealing with it. I walk into the ballot, not even knowing what's gonna be on the ballot, why is my opinion more important than the five people who've done their homework? Couldn't you-
And why, why was their opinion any more important last November?
I'm not saying it is, but the fact is, it's legal now.
It's legal for personal consumption.
I, I get it, but-
I think, I mean, it's, it's a reasonable point, and I think that if the vote comes out fifty-fifty, or even if it comes out sixty-forty, I think we probably still have to go through this process of educating and, and making a rational decision as a board, because it's a non-binding vote. If on the other hand, the vote comes out eighty-twenty, I don't know that you're gonna change too many people's minds, even if you give them all the-
I get that, but let's say it comes out sixty-forty, and we do our homework and find out, it's actually devastating some communities. Our community wants it, sixty-forty. But the five of us have done our homework, and we've looked at it, and like, you know what? No.
Yeah, then we have to put it on the ballot, because we have to put it on the ballot.
Our job is not to try and predict what the people want, only.
Correct. But if it comes out sixty-forty, and, and then, and then we do all this work, and, and we'll change some people's minds, I think, by doing that. Because the ultimate vote will be when we put the land use ordinance question on the ballot, which will be binding.
Well, it's, it's interesting that, that your version of sixty-forty is different from Rick's version of sixty-forty.
I'm, it's just a thought, actually.
But, but hang on. I think, I think, I mean, I gotta, I gotta grab it, I gotta grab it for a second. I think that with either a Rockport informational meeting, or forum, or a larger forum, I think that we get the inform, the, we get the public input, we get a really good feel for the public input from those people who come to it and give us the feedback, you know, in the ensuing three weeks. So, I, I, I agree with what I think Brendan is saying, that a non-binding referendum on a subject this complicated only inflames the issue later on if we decide to lead in a direction that's different from, from what that comes in.
Look, let me lay out a timeline here. We've got a June ballot that we can ask people at. There's the November ballot that we might want to ask people at. If we're gonna have a bond issue, it's gonna go on, you know, it would be on a November, if we put a November bond issue, but-
Over the roads.
For now, there is no municipal issue gonna be on any election in November unless we decide to put it there. Now, the state can have some, but if we put, if we decide to hold off, do all our education, come back with a nice question to the, to the public, and put it on the November ballot. We have then next June, twenty eighteen, to come in with our, our land use ordinance. However, based on that timeline, the state anticipates having their final rules made and passed effective February twenty eighteen, which means somebody could come in the next day and get their permit, and go into operation, and we're out of the business.
Well, we're in the business.
Well, or we're, well, we, the select board, we, the citizens of the town, are beyond being able to outlaw it, because it's now gonna be there.
Okay, so, so, my, let me be concrete. Okay, so so my, let me be concrete. I think we need to pay attention to, as Rick says, time is is of the essence, but I don't think we throw out a non-binding thing in June as the first thing we do. I I say, I I believe there's not enough time between now and then to educate ourselves and the town, therefore, let's not even bother with it, let's shoot for November, totally packaged up. This is what we've learned, this is what we've we've transmitted to the town in terms of what we've learned, and this is what's on the ballot, ORC, you know, here's the word.
Well, to get to that November ballot, we have to have everything in line in August so we can have our public hearings at the first of September so it can get all printed and available for that ballot.
Okay, so.
Because it comes out on, first of October, that ballot has, the the absentee ballots have to be available.
So doable, not doable? I'm not sure what you're saying.
I'm saying.
That's our timeline.
If 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 we're gonna start now, and we're gonna have those public hearings, we're gonna have to organize them, we're gonna have to get people here to speak to them, and then we're gonna have to decide what we're gonna do.
By public hearings, you mean the forum?
The forum.
Yeah, yeah.
Then we're gonna have to decide what we're gonna do, and we're gonna have to hand it off to the ORC if we want the ORC to do anything during, you know, sometime during that summer so that it's all ready to go to us, so we can start blessing it at the end of, you know, somewhere in August and into September.
Okay.
My, my sense is that we, if we're gonna do something, which I think we need to do, whether which direction we go in is still open a question, but if we're gonna do something, we have to have land use ordinance amendments on the November ballot.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Why are you guys not speaking about the moratorium?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
We still, we have all that time in the bank, six months.
Can I, can I finish, please?
Sure.
That means that if we're gonna do a non-binding question, it it doesn't make any sense to do it anytime other than June. And I would submit that if we do that, it's a piece of information that we can gather akin to the piece of information from, that we're gonna gather if we do this forum, which I think is probably a good idea. And and granted, it's gonna be knee-jerk and, you know, gut reaction from the public, but that's, that's part of what we have to listen to, I think. We could very easily, you know, the vote could go one way, and then we could gather the information in the forums, and we could, as the board decide to to advise our ORC to go in a different direction, that's perfectly okay. But I think if we're gonna do a non-binding question, you have, we have to do it in June, otherwise it makes no sense.
I don't know why we would do that before we held the forum where people might educate themselves.
Well, because I I think that it's a piece of information that we gather, and I get it, that the people aren't gonna be educated necessarily as much as they might be, but I, you know, I don't, I don't know how many are gonna take advantage of the education anyway, quite honestly.
But aren't we gonna get a good idea, I mean, I'll say it out loud plainly, no binding referendum, no non-binding referendum, just just take that part out of the, out of the equation, because for one thing, it lets us sit on our butts for six or eight weeks that we don't particularly have. So don't you think that we're gonna get enough information from people in the audience on a, on one or two workshops slash forums who are gonna say either, I have great plans and I wanna show the, show them to you, how does this work and what you're thinking, or over my dead body? I mean, we're gonna get that input, and we're gonna have an idea of of at least.
We've seen from the library, though, you get, you get loud, you don't necessarily get.
Yeah, you don't get, you don't get broad necessarily, and that's, that would be my,
and I, I think we will gather information there, but I don't know, you know, who are we gonna get?
Jamie did bring up a point that that, you know, I was about to bring up too, is that, that we haven't used the the bullet that we saved.
Right.
Which is the moratorium.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a lot of towns have spent that, taken that shot too early, I think. And so you still have that in your.
You could do that in November.
You could do that in November if you got to the point where you're not ready and you feel like we need six more months, or or the moratorium is six months and then a six-month extension?
And, yes, and the state's not gonna surprise you with their go-date. I mean, we're gonna be able to.
Right.
See that.
Yeah. So, I mean, you do have that, that, that's, we've saved that bullet in the gun.
And one other point of order for this long-range planning that you're contemplating, Bill, is that maybe you could ask the ORC to do something limited, for starters. If you just ask the ORC, where in town would you see these uses?
If there was going to be.
Right. That's not asking the ORC to work out, how many square feet do you need and what's the appropriate buffering from other uses or, you know.
Well, to a certain extent.
It could be a big waste of time if they're not gonna be asked to do the rest.
Yeah, but I still think to a certain extent, I think we have to make that decision as to, at least at the thirty-thousand-foot level, where do we want it? Do we want it, where do we want to permit it? You know, do we want it in West Rockport or Rockville, or do we want it in the village, whatever it might be? I think we have to provide that guidance.
You might not need the ORC then, because you usually go to the ORC for more technical questions.
I think we'll want them for the nuts and bolts of things. I think, you know, we'll, you know, at some point, we'll want them to weigh in as a, as a good group of people.
Okay, Owen? So. I don't think that it's unreasonable to think that we could get a a relatively comprehensive forum put together before town meeting. I did, I don't think that's an unreasonable thing to shoot for, either at the beginning of June or the end of May. Really not gonna take too much to get three or four experts in the field. If you wanna combine it with other towns, that's, that's fine, more information out there. I just, I feel like I have to say this. The idea that this, this issue is too complicated for the voters to give an opinion on, I just, I kind of reject that almost everything that we do. And granted, marijuana becoming legal for retail sales and recreational consumption, yes, it is a very, very complicated issue, don't get me wrong. But you could make an argument that changing the zoning is complicated, and people go into the ballot box not knowing a damn thing about it, don't even know what nine oh seven even means, all they see is tall building and not to exceed a height, and you go, oh, okay, cool. So I just, I kind of reject that argument. We rely on the voters to tell us stuff filled with incomplete knowledge, and we make decisions based on incomplete knowledge.
That's, I I agree with, I agree with everything you just said. It just seems a little strange that we're gonna say, well, we need to educate ourselves, so we're gonna set up this event to educate ourselves, but we're gonna sample the community before any of that education, before they get to that.
And I guess I was not viewing the sampling of the community as happening prior to a a public forum. I mean, I, we've got the end of April, all of May, and the beginning part of June to try to put something together, and I could go to work tomorrow and get commitments from three people that can speak expertly about it. We could have it set up two weeks from now.
So I don't know whether I am, you know, in favor of commercial activities in Rockport, but I do know that we have at least one, you know, retail person who's already doing stuff who's expressed interest. And if Rockport were to eventually do that, I don't wanna lose that person to Camden or Rockland, you know? So so that's what's motivating me, is that I wanna learn so, you know, I can be part of a leadership board. And and I'm, at this point, I'm not, you know, I'm not considering that that safety bullet, as you, as you called it, because I'd rather we make an informed decision and then march ahead with it, whichever way it went. And it could be a split vote on the, on the.
So.
On this board.
Did you say spliff vote?
Split vote, I'm sorry.
Oh, and then, moving on.
My, my, yeah, it's right over my head.
I'll tell you, I'll explain it later.
Where do we wanna go?
You know, probably home.
Yo, we can hold, we, thank you.
I'd like to.
We can, go ahead.
I, I, I would like to direct the town manager to check with the town managers of our surrounding towns to gauge interest in, whatever you wanna call it.
Yep.
A symposium, a forum.
And I'll get some tentative yeses.
That'd be great.
And then, once you figure out a ballpark, uh, date range, then we can refine it from there.
If we were to, saying this out loud, if we were to schedule a multi-town forum within a couple of days of our town meeting, totally independent, we would have all this equipment moved upstairs and we could do a good job of of streaming it, et cetera, rather than perhaps doing it twice.
Camden do the same thing for their upper house?
They have a single camera in their upper house that.
Yeah.
Is not, um.
Perfect, upstairs it is.
And then the question becomes, do we wanna put this non-binding question on the ballot if we're gonna have the forum before the election? Or do we wanna just rely on the forum and hope that we get a reasonable cross-section?
My opinion, I would definitely couple the two together. If we know we can do a really good educational push and try to get some experts out there and really notify folks and hopefully get a big turnout, maybe not the week of, I mean, I would, I would give the community, you know, at least a week or so to try to digest it and talk amongst them, their friends and neighbors. But, yeah, I would love to see them both done in conjunction.
When do you think you'll be moving cameras up?
Well, it it totally depends, we would move it after the last meeting that we had down here, or we sacrifice a meeting of of whatever sort. So that's, the only reason I said within a couple of days is sometimes it's tight, sometimes it's not.
The last one that I I see have, we're being down here, at least on, what I've seen on the town calendar, would be the planning board on the twenty-fourth of May.
All right, that gives us ten, ten days.
Our, our last select board meeting would be on the twenty-second. I don't know if any other groups are planning on using this and needing the live stream. These are just the town groups, I know.
Oh, and that would be very helpful, to have some names.
Yep.
If you've got some contacts.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Well, then the question then is, do we wanna then also have the non-binding referendum added to the June ballot?
Yes.
And Linda, I need to turn to you and ask you a question. This item would be appearing on the secret ballot. It was not put on the notice for our public hearing next week. Do we have the ability to hold a separate public hearing on it? Or do we have to? There's nuances here that I'm still not really clear on as to, you know, for things that are going on the secret ballot, you have to have this thing here and that thing there.
I don't usually do the.
Okay.
Yeah, that went.
Stacy does, but you could do it on the twenty-fourth.
Oh.
The, the land use ones have very specific timeframes, the other ones.
This is not a land use.
Right, exactly, so.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
And then on the language of that, Rick and I touched on, with Phil's advice, it's really abbreviated, it doesn't mention many of the other uses contemplated in the act. I don't know whether to explore that more. Do you want a question that is substantially different than the one they already answered in November, or is indistinguishable from the one they already answered in November?
It's gotta be different, it's gotta be more on the local level. I mean, that was statewide.
It has to be about the commercial, the, the stuff that we can control. We can't control how the vote went, so half of that, let's say, half of that whole package is already a done deal, now it's the, how do you deal with?
So the question is saying, you voted on this for the state already, what do you think about for the town?
Recognizing what's already legal and we don't have control over and only proposing the thing, the commercial, the retail sales aspect of it, the retail.
I think that's what Phil was aiming at when he did that then.
Yeah. Excuse me. So where are we going?
If we're gonna put this on, do we have to vote on it tonight?
The non-binding question?
I think we.
That's the question.
I think we do, in case we need to make notification to hold a public hearing, like on the twenty-fourth.
I know we're already holding a public hearing on the twenty-fourth, but that's for requested liquor license. I'll talk about that later.
So if, I mean, if we are gonna vote on it tonight, my, my own opinion is that not not yet being confident that we're gonna be able to arrange this symposium and that it'll be populated with relevant experts, you know, I'll vote against putting it on the ballot. If we have time, if we have time to ensure that we can pull together that, that forum and do a good job of it, then I might, I probably would change my mind.
Having set the tone.
Yes.
Hey, about Hartley.
Well, I'll move that we put a non-binding opinion poll on the ballot as detailed in our packets.
Today's the tenth.
Oh, I, I know there's dates or.
We've got two months, two months and four days.
We've got the motion on the floor to put a, a non-binding opinion poll. And.
Get him here tomorrow.
And a part of this is also holding some kind of a forum between now and town meeting, Election Day.
When, and again, I'm back to the timing issues and public hearings and all that. It says on our calendar, absentee ballots available May twelfth. When do you have to send the ballots to be printed?
The nomination papers close on the twenty-eighth, so that's when the ballot's gonna go to the printer, so I need the information a couple of days prior to that so I can prepare my ballot to send to the printer.
Okay.
They really would like to have it on the twentieth, but.
And how much notice do we have to provide for a public hearing?
But.
I'm trying to find out if this is actually gonna work.
Yeah, we had some conversations with Phil, Jamie, correct? As far as public hearing, an item like this, there's, there was some discussion that Phil and, you, Phil and I had about an item like this, the town meeting is act, because you'd have to have a public hearing for this because it's on a secret ballot.
Yes.
So, but.
Seven days' notice if it was a new thing.
But prior to, prior to when the vote was, when, when does the secret, when does the public hearing?
The public hearing has to occur seven days before.
The meeting.
The, the town meeting, and I don't remember whether it's seven or ten.
Yep.
Notice of that public hearing.
But if the.
Seventeen or fourteen.
Well, there's no point in having a public hearing after the ballots have been sent to be printed.
Right.
I mean.
Well, the.
But for informational purposes, for what is on the secret ballot.
Yeah, the very point is, since it's a secret ballot, there won't be any discussion on the town meeting floor, so you're just trying to replace that. It can be after the ballots are printed.
It can, yes.
Yeah.
You're trying to give the forum for discussion.
I guess, I thought the public hearing was to, for us to hear things and then, and then massage what we put on the ballot if we need to.
There's a long Rockport tradition of that doubling up on, excuse me, public hearings, but you guys don't need anybody's permission to put it on the ballot.
Okay. Then when do we wanna hold or try, when do we wanna look to hold a public forum? Whether it is for multiple towns or just our town?
I would say either the end of the week in May twenty-fifth or twenty-six, or in that end of the week, May thirtieth, thirty-first, and beginning of June.
So you're suggesting holding it on Thursday or Friday?
Only because that's the quickest, well, Jeff can probably correct me on how much time you would need to go from planning, that last planning board meeting to getting everything rigged up there.
You want a short turnaround time between.
And I actually, I want it as close to when absentee ballots are already out. It's one of the things, you know.
So they're gonna be out the thirty days before.
Yeah, so you're not gonna be able to catch that, that good two, two heavy weeks right there, but it's one of those things, try to push out information as quick as you can after people have absentee ballots, because I remember one of the things people voted on, they voted absentee, and then there was a big push at the end of information, and everyone was all huffy about it.
That was the governor's race.
Oh, well, there's that one, too.
We could certainly hold the forum on the twenty-fifth.
That's, that gives you enough time to get everything up there?
Yeah, the morning, we, I mean, it's about four, four to five hours, just.
So what I'll do is I'll make the rounds tomorrow and at least give you some speculation about that or or pushing it further back or, but I'll, I'll email Rick tomorrow with some names and some potentials.
Okay, good, thank you.
The absentee ballot started on the twelfth.
It's, because we wanna have it be big and upstairs, it's as basically as close to, once absentees go out, as we can get it.
Okay. So we have the motion on the floor to place the non-binding opinion poll on the June warrant. Do we have further discussion? Since I've already heard from one person to vote against, I'm gonna call the roll by name. Cassas?
Yes.
Uh, Reardon?
No.
Parker?
Uh, yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Chapman, yes. Okay. We're, talk to Stacy tomorrow to make sure we're getting all the time.
I just typed myself a note to contact Phil.
Okay. That deals with that. So now we go on to the next one, and that is whether or not we want to join the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission or the MCRPC.
Yes, sure, next.
Well, you already, essentially, they already decided to join, correct?
We didn't, no.
But you didn't decide, yeah, you did, you just.
You don't also appoint two members.
You just have to appoint two members.
Not it. Yeah, well.
We have no idea whether we could be here.
I would suggest that one of them be Jamie. And then, at least at this point, the other one be one of us. And as I said, I'd be willing to do that. The only issue is, I think their annual meeting is April twenty-seventh. And I'm already booked that evening, so I couldn't attend, but.
This is up to Union?
Yeah, out at Union. But if somebody else wants to take that on, I've already heard Owen say no.
Not it.
Um, I'm actually, I think I'm offshore.
You, you, you know, we don't have to have two people there.
No.
You know, it's just.
You just have to have two appointees.
Yep. And I think the next one would be whether or not we, the next question would be whether or not we would want to request, um, being on their board?
Executive board.
Well, their board of directors, I think it is.
The, that's gone by, there's enough candidates and there's a ballot already out there, so that's not an issue for this year.
Okay.
Audra Collerbell of Rockland City Hall may be joining their board.
She's got my vote.
Well, Bill, if you're willing to do it, and you're interested in it, Jamie can go to the April twenty-seventh meeting if you miss it. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Well, I will then nominate Jamie Francamano and Bill Chapman to serve on the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission as represented as of Rockport.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you for doing it.
Okay. We now need to move to wastewater commissioners.
Move to enter as wastewater commissioners.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor? We are.
Move to commit the January twenty-seventeen wastewater user debt fees totaling twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-three cents to the treasurer for collection.
Second.
Would you read that number again?
Twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-three cents. This is the January.
That's January, yep. It's motion, do we have a second?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor? The January one has been approved. Now we do the February.
Move to commit the February twenty-seventeen wastewater user debt fees totaling twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-three cents to the treasurer for collection.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
That was twenty-four, six, forty-five, thirty-three?
That's what I had, yep.
Yep. Pass that one on down. We have one more piece of business.
No march.
And that is to approve the expenditure of up to two hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred, twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents for construction of the Commercial Street sewer extension.
Essentially, you have already done this.
Yeah, well.
But Megan is recommending that you just, you take it, the kind of belt and suspenders and take another vote to approve the expenditure, just so that we're not.
The amount, sorry, the amount you have in your motions wrong.
I was looking at that.
It should be two hundred and fifty, oh, maybe it is right.
The motion is two fifty-six, one, ten, twenty, yeah, that includes.
Now about the, oh, sorry.
The headline, the header is wrong.
Oh. Okay.
But it, it's basically the belt and suspenders so that when the auditors look at it next year or ten, two years from now, they won't say, oh, did you ever get a vote to, to approve the expenditure, even though you essentially have done that when you approved the project?
I move to authorize the funding of the Commercial Street Sewer Extension Project in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents with money from the investment accounts held with the First and Bar Harbor Trust Services.
Second.
I have a quick.
Yep.
Original cost of the project was estimated as two hundred and sixty-eight, what, what dropped it down?
Uh, what are the current estimate?
From. But that's.
And then the bid came in.
And then the bid came in lower, great, thank you. That was it for me.
Any further discussion? And all in favor? We're done with wastewater unless somebody else has something.
Move to exit as wastewater commissioner.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? We have exited.
I don't think we have anything.
We're now into our liaison reports. Yes.
Oh, I, you don't do them on this meeting, do you?
We've got camera here, so we'll be taking pictures immediately after.
Do you do, do you do liaison reports this, this time?
Well, because we're not going to have a second meeting.
Oh, okay.
So I was going to say, let's keep it brief. I did want to report that the library director handed out the March statistics and everything is up across the board, really. Adult circulation up eleven percent, young adult circulation up twenty-five percent, children down eleven percent. Attendance, adults up four percent, computer usage up, everything is going well. And they did, they, they received in, this is in, only in March. This is desk income, gifts, grants, or donations that came in, eleven hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty cents. So they continue to bring things in. So that was that report. The investment committee meets later this month. Uh, that's all I have to report. I'll let Owen handle, I'll let Owen handle when he gets to it, Midcoast Solid Waste.
Harbor Committee has not met, and we're going to hear from the Conservation Commission at our next regular meeting.
Uh, I'll read, so this is from Jeff Scott. I was not able to attend the last Pathways Committee meeting, but he gave me an update. So next month, they're going to be meeting with Ron Howard to, um, look at the new connector on Beach Hill. They finally did purchase that land. I guess they've roughed out a trail that goes from their exercise loop and spills out right at that, um, further on down the road, Beach Hill entrance. Not where you park, but where the kind of gate is.
The sharp corner is.
Yeah, yep. Uh, Main Coast Heritage Trust needs ten thousand dollars to finish that connector, and they want to partner and collaborate with us. It's a joint effort to raise funds, so they're not asking for funds directly from the town, but just what can Pathways do to help them raise some funds? Um, but, 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 could connect some neighborhoods. Forest Glen is a neighborhood that has been having some discussions about what they can do to support it. They really like this, the fact that we took action on Route One, Route ninety as well, because if you can, over time, get up to Erickson Fields, then that really connects you, you can get all the way to Rockville Road if you went up Beach Hill and then down the other end. So the motion in support of collaborating with Aldemir Farm or Main Coast Heritage Trust to further the connection of community both in time, so it's unanimous to collaborate. They also talked about the Round the Mountain Trail needs to build connectivity where and when we can. Visions overlap with Coastal Mountains Land Trust Committee voted and approved support of the Coastal Mountains Land Trust around the Mountain Trail, and the rationale for both being connecting the communities.
Bill, did we have a meeting?
No. Uh, we've got a, we have the Strategic Planning Committee meeting this Thursday. Is it this Thursday? Yes.
Five to six thirty.
Five to six thirty over at the town office. But originally, remember, they canceled the regular April meeting? I got an email from Jim today, Jim Guerra, director of that, probably going to have to be back on. Well, something to do with that lawsuit, I guess, that things are moving, so maybe it is. I told, I've already got different plans for that night now.
And, um, it's a, it's a, it's a kind of solid waste related thing. The Waste Watch folks have been overly diligent in spending time at the swap shop, trying to understand what makes that place tick and how they can improve it. So, I mean, I think that they've had basically volunteer at the Solid Waste Corporation every day for, I don't even know how long now. And I did not catch the Recreation Committee meeting, so no update there.
The thing I'd say about the swap shop is if it's not open on weekends, it has little use for a lot of people.
Well, what they'd really like to do is, is kind of broaden it out and have it be, yes, a swap shop, but also like a community repair shop. So if you bring your item in to chuck it, maybe you can get someone to fix it and you get to take it home anyway.
For me, um, amends review is still in the scheduling phase, I think. I don't think I've seen an email with a schedule on that one yet. I'm here. Responded to another poll. Cemetery is, still hasn't met, the snow's gone, so we've got to get out there and see you at some point.
After taxes, next Tuesday.
ORC has finished their season and put things through. You all probably have received an email regarding the mini-storage situation. Jamie is going to be communicating with Aaron, he and I will work together on some communication there.
Speaking of mini-storage, uh, the planning board got together and went through all the articles and gave their recommendations on it. I had copious notes, which I left at home, so this is brief, see you, bye.
Did they approve every one of them, or did they withhold approval on all, on some of them?
Now you're taxing my memory, but there was some considerable discussion. Mister Francamano will remind me what I forgot. There was considerable discussion on several of them.
Jamie Francamano from the Planning and Development Department. The planning board did vote to recommend all but one of them, and the, the one that they recommend against voter approval on is the zoning amendment requested by Rockport Granite. And technically, this was the ORC's doing. Rockport Granite didn't come around looking for a zoning amendment, but rather, the, uh, ORC was working on the work plan item regarding landscapers and contractors and what they do in their headquarters and their stockpile. If you have a contractor with a big yard where they are breaking rock and dealing with noisy dusty things right next to residential, that, that issue of impacts is what the ORC was working on. And, uh, we had at least two contractors already that we were in touch with for advice, and Josh Carl was another who came to a meeting. So technically, it wasn't on the ORC's work plan, and the planning board members took issue with that. You could properly at your meeting on the eighteenth decide, well, let's make it wait a year and give it to them on their work plan. On the other hand, the, uh, the planning board, the ORC did take it up for logical reasons of their own. They weren't looking for, to give a, a particular business owner any special treatment in, in acting on this. So, uh, you've got seven where they were five to zero four, and this issue where they were five to zero against, um, adoption by the voters.
And thank you for jogging my memory, I did ask Terry McKenzie and/or, um, who's, who's the other gentleman, the gentleman that worked on the architectural?
Warren Erickson.
Warren Erickson.
On architectural review.
To come to the meeting to help explain the architectural standards and the, the little bit that they put in. They may, they went a little bit towards what could be a long way or could not, or could stop there. So I, I asked them to come to the meeting to help us understand that.
I'll give you guys a memo in your packet later this week to prepare for the AT.
And I could speak a little bit to that. The, the planning board did a lot of work making some recommendations on architectural standards. Their goal was, I think, to have everything set down so that when they have to make a finding, they have, you know, black and white things to make a finding with. And the ORC took some of those recommendations and did, and did make some changes, but they did say that part of the, um, job of the planning board is sometimes to make decisions that are not necessarily laid out in black and white, you know, with, with the ordinance as a, as a backdrop. But that there is some, the planning board, in some cases, has to exercise some discretion. And so they, that's one of the reasons that, uh, the, the ORC recommended not going quite as far as the planning board advised in some cases.
To put that another way, there's a lot of, we urge you to do this, rather than you shall do this.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And last quick update, I did hear from one of the people, he's available that evening.
Really? That fast?
This Owen guy, he's got contacts.
He's got peeps.
Text messages, amazing things, digibites flowing through under tubes.
Digibites.
It's complicated terms.
I think we are.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Oh, my God, yes.
You got to take pictures.